Check, check, one, two. Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment on this warm Wednesday. This board has the power, under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines, to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of city staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines, and they have been appointed to this board by the City Council. The board members are volunteers, and they receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a minute to introduce our board members. On the audience's right is Tom DiCio. Next to him is Rhonda Thadillo. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. On my right is Marla Jones. Next to her is Justin Gross. And I want to welcome our newest member of the board, Heather Ann Rowe. Heather Ann, yay! She comes with a fan club. Heather Ann was appointed to the board to fill a vacancy that was created by Nathan Blake, who had served on the board for over 10 years. Nathan moved out of state. So Mayor County's appointment was our vacancy, so he appointed Heather Ann. She owns a small business retail shop in the East Village, and she lives on the southwest side of Des Moines with her family. So we want to welcome Heather Ann to the board. That means we are a fully-appointed seven-member board. We are missing one member today, Dave Gare. I'm going to go ahead and introduce our city staff that will be assisting us today with the hearing. Legal counsel for the zoning board of adjustment. To my left is Mr. Gary Guidelock. City staff, Frank Dunn Young, senior city planner down here on the audience's left on the sidebar. Trey Yoshi Chakrabarti, city planner. Bert Droste, deputy planning administrator. Catherine Drehas, city planner. Eric Lundey, zoning enforcement officer. And Eric, who do you have with you?
So, my replacement, Chris Houseco.
Chris, welcome.
He served as an inspection supervisor, and so he took this role. Sorry about that.
Cool. Well, welcome, Chris.
Transitioning into the role of being in the board.
Excellent. Great to have you here with us. And our meeting moderator, all the bells and whistles behind the scenes is Carlotta Wolder here in the front. I'm going to cover the meeting's procedure here for everyone. For some of you, this may be your first time in front of this board. You may hope it's your only time. But we will take you through our procedures here. Don't worry about the process. We will remind you as we go when it's either your turn or when you can participate. But I do want to go over some of the fundamentals here. First and foremost, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-legal board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. And if you don't have a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations for today's hearing, they are in the two little black trays here by the door as you walked in. So when I'm done with my opening remarks, if you need to grab one, feel free to do so. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items listed on the first portion of the agenda, which is the consent agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. Rather, they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions recommended by staff, or if there's an individual in the audience, or a member of this board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. And I will come back to that consent agenda here in just a minute. For the regular portion of the agenda, after an item is announced, city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. Will then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item. Anyone wanting to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board regarding the item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments if they so choose. All speakers must speak only from the podium here at the center of the room, and begin their presentation by first giving both their name and address of business or residence as appropriate, in the event you may need to be contacted for legal notices that are related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they're respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will immediately deliberate the request and make a decision on the appeal here today. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until at least one week from today's hearing if you need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order, which will then be provided to you and city staff. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. Finally, the decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. And all material, written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation, is part of the permanent record. So if you have any pictures, or drawings, or plans that you want to present to us that you haven't already shared with staff, you'll need to give the city staff appropriate copies of those. And you may contact city staff after the hearing if you'd like a copy of anything that's been presented today. Finally, just a few housekeeping items. We would ask that you avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing. You're doing a fine job with that. Please ensure your cellphone has been silenced. Also, so far, so good. And if you need to use the restroom, you can just leave through the door here. You don't have to go back downstairs. There's restrooms just down the hallway past the staircase. Finally, once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the meeting and rejoin the heat. If necessary, we'll have a five-minute break in the meeting around 3:00 or 3:30 if that's needed. So at this time, we're going to take a quick review of the agenda and see if we have any changes to the agenda that's been printed and distributed. And we'll have Frank help us out with that.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Frank Dunn, and I am looking to have items number three and eight requested for continuance. Item three is a conditional use request for a limited retail sales use at 3826 Douglas Avenue. The requested continuance will allow notification of the request to, for additionally, to have liquor sales in addition to wine and beer at the existing grocer. And item eight is located at 821 East Euclid Avenue, and the request is to amend a conditional use as previously granted, which allowed it to be open from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They're requesting to be open now from an hour later, so 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The applicant has requested a continuance to allow time to address neighbor concerns. And that is all I have for changes to the agenda.
All right. Well, so for items three and eight, board members, there's a requested continuance on each of these items. Sounds like primarily that's going to be to allow the applicant to do a little outreach for each. Would there be a motion to move items three and eight for continuance to the next meeting? Moved by Marla. Seconded by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right. Seeing no opposed, that carries 6-0. So if you were here for items three or eight, we will hear those cases next month. All right. So that will bring us back then to our consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda. It's a conditional use request at 1111 Illinois Street, related to the Polk County Conservation Board regarding construction of a parking lot in construction with the Lordson Skate Park. And based on staff recommendations and the requested appeal, staff's recommending approval of that conditional use, subject to the conditions that are documented. Is there anybody here in the audience that would be opposed to this board granting approval of the requested construction of the parking lot there? You're opposed to that?
Yes.
Okay. So then we'll go ahead and move item one to our regular portion of the hearing so that we will hear that item directly. Okay. So since we had nothing else on consent, correct, Frank? Okay. So we'll move to the regular portion of the hearing, and item one will be our first item. And it looks like Catherine's going to give us the background on this item to kick us off for the regular portion of the hearing.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehas, planner for the City of Des Moines. The item before you, item one, is located at 111, or excuse me, 1111 Illinois Street. You may know this as the Riverview Dog Park location. And, whoops, I'm sorry, we're still on the agenda. There we go. The proposal would be for a conditional use to allow a parking lot that would be primarily for the skate park located south of Interstate 235. So it is considered a non-accessory parking, and it will be a surface parking lot. As you can see, it is located on the west bank of the river, north of 235. I've got some other photos, but if you can see where my cursor is, the proposed parking lot would be primarily along the south area of what is currently part of the dog park. And then the proposal would be to kind of reformat the whole dog park area and extend the dog park up towards University Avenue. This is a little hard to see, so I'll zoom in just so you get a little bit better view. I can zoom in further if need be. But you can see that this great area is where the parking lot would be located currently. This is a dog park area. And then again, the proposed plan would include extending the dog park north towards University Avenue, so they wouldn't really be losing any space. And then access from the parking lot to the skate park would be along West River Street under Interstate 235, over to kind of this current existing cul-de-sac turnaround area next to the skate park. Just a little bit closer view of what that would look like. A couple of site photos just to show the existing conditions, the turnaround, and then looking north under Interstate 235. And then this would be heading back north along, excuse me, West River Street. And this would be the general area where that parking lot would be located. Staff is recommending approval of the requested conditional use. A couple of the conditions that we have in place that are just our general, that they follow any of the applicable standards within the city code, and obtain any licenses, and follow building and fire code. And then while there hasn't been an explicit ask for food trucks, there was a request for a conditional use on a food truck for the parking lot on the south side of the skate park. So we wanted to include that condition just so that they have similar conditions for both locations of parking uses. And any food truck on the premises shall not hinder any required fire access lanes. If the board has any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Yeah. Questions for Catherine? Catherine, just a very brief one, and you kind of alluded to it. What kind of parking is there for vehicles now for people that want to access Lordson Skate Park?
Let me see. I know there's some on the south side of the parking, excuse me, of the skate park. I think it's fairly limited, so I think that's probably what's prompting the interest in having additional parking. And then this additional parking will also be situated in such a way that it will benefit the dog park as well. A new entrance will be added to the dog park on the north side of the parking lot, and so there'll be handicap parking on both for essentially the skate park as well as for the dog park uses. This will also get a lot of the on-street parking that occurs on Illinois Street and West River Street, a more, a more safe and designated area to park when they're visiting the dog park as well as the skate park, so.
Gotcha.
And then I did forget to mention that we do have a consent map. We did not receive any cards back. And the county also did their required neighborhood meeting. They provided us with the information that they sent out. They provided us with a list of comments that they received from their, during their and after their public outreach.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty extensive.
Okay.
And that's what I have for you.
All right. Great. Okay. Thank you very much for the intro. Okay. So the way the hearing works, the applicant or their representative, if they're present, they have up to 10 minutes to present their case. So anybody here from the conservation board? Come on up. We just need your name. I think in your case, your business address would be appropriate, and you've got up to 10 minutes to give your reasoning for your request.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Adam Fenderick with Polk County Conservation, 12130 Northwest 128th Street, Granger, Iowa. So I think Catherine did a great job preparing the board packet. That explains our request. This request is really coming as a result of some of the city work happening with Levy River Trail that is going to be removing West River Drive, and that's currently where all the parking is for the skate park. So with that trail going in, that road goes away. So then we have nowhere to park. So that's kind of a result, is we did need surface parking to accommodate that, to accommodate the skate park, and then look at accommodating the dog park, and then the, kind of serve as a trailhead for that future trail. So that's kind of how this has been working. We've been in partnership with Des Moines Parks and Rec to do the land transfer. So the land transfer has been recorded and turned over to Polk County Conservation as the owner. So, you know, I think all in all, as a conservation organization, we don't like to build parking lots. You know, we have, we have two acres of solid concrete at the skate park, and now almost another two acres of concrete here for the parking lot. It's needed. We just have to do it. It's just the way of business at all that we have to do. You know, some of the, some green elements we have been putting into this to kind of lessen the impacts of the impervious pavement is we did get a water quality initiative grant from IDALS to install porous pavers. So in that map you have, you see some of the parking lots are kind of checkered. Those are porous pavers. So they'll go in there, collect all our stormwater, drain it out before it discharges into the Des Moines River. And also, we're doing a bio-cell in the northeast corner. Oh, can you pull them up?
Thanks, Catherine.
Yeah, in this map, the checkered ones on the south end of the parking lot, those are porous pavement, pavers. And then we're doing the bio-cell in the northeast corner. So those are going, and we're doing kind of an enhanced landscaping plan. We have some more plans going in than the code requires. So we're trying to make this as conservation-oriented as we can do with a surface parking lot. So happy to answer any questions and answer the concerns from the public in the rebuttal.
Okay. Questions for Adam? Yes, Heather Ann.
Are there any attachments? Is that from the research?
Yes, there will be. And operation-wise, it'll probably work the same way as we operate the skate park, Operation Downtown Des Moines. We have a contract with them that they service those.
Any other questions? Please use your microphone.
Hi.
There we go.
Downtown in that area, is it currently metered on the street?
It is not.
And this would be a free parking lot, then?
It will be a free parking lot.
Okay.
And Adam, while we're on that access, I've only accessed Lordson Skate Park on foot from like Second Avenue at a couple of events, but the only vehicle access to the skate park for visitors would be from University, then coming down the West River. Is that right? Is there any access off Second Avenue itself?
Not vehicle or access.
There's not? Okay. All right. So vehicles were coming by where the parking lot's going to be anyway to try to get there with the limited parking that was already there, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. We'll check back with you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Rhonda. Is the parking lot going to be lit? You can nod or come back up?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Have to meet certain city requirements for lighting? Okay. All right. Okay. So what happens now, now it's the public's turn. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the conservation board's request? If you want to speak in support, you've got up to five minutes. Just come up to the mic. Seeing none, is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's requests? Come on up. We just need your name, address, and you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Chair Pins and ZBA Board. My name is Carol Maher. I live at 701 Polk Boulevard, Des Moines, Iowa. I apologize for my casual attire, but I biked over, and I don't use AC, so this is my cooling center. Woo-hoo! I also ask for a little grace today, as have a big wind-up to get to my final point. Just this summer, Canada has burned all summer, and it snows there nine months a year. In Hawaii, where it never snows, they suffered the worst loss of human life in the country's history of wildfire. And off the Florida Keys, the Atlantic Ocean measures 101.1 degrees, bleaching and killing countless coral reef. But we all know that the political will it takes at the local, state, national, and international level will never exist to make the big changes to stop, let alone reverse, this climate change disaster. But little micro decisions like this one by this seven-member board can make a difference. Little changes every day, every day, standing up to the car culture and all the concrete and emissions that comes with it. For three years or so, skateboarders have figured out how to get to the park. I ride by there all the time. I love talking to them. I don't skate. Plus, there are thousands of free or nearly free parking spots within walking distance of the place, for this, within walking distance of this place for play and fitness. There are thousands of spots. It's not just the cul-de-sac. They're there. Last year, Des Moines had to use $3 million in ARPA funds to fill a parking garage deficit. The spaces are not being used. Now is the time for you to take the morally right stand against the car culture that has reigned since the Eisenhower administration. Say no to paving pet paradise and putting in a parking lot. Say yes to the existing city code and deny this request. But I know you're not going to do that. So, since I know that the diet-due dollars are worth more than my plea, I urge you to at least make this a no-toe zone and available 24/7/365, unlike the skate park that is typically unusable and unavailable during the winter months. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anybody that wishes to speak in neutrality, since staff asked me to say that? Seeing none? Okay. Do we have any further questions for staff? Eric, is there anything you want to add? Yeah, please come up. It's quite all right.
Eric Lundey, Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services. The thing I wanted to point out here is that nothing about this ask at the point right now is asking for like seasonal activity or anything. I think down the road, you might expect them to be back in front of you if there's any desire to have seasonal events or something that are making use of this. We know like they do the do tour and some things that might need to make use of the parking for things such as food truck staging or something like that. They have that over on their existing site, and they have permission to do that. But I can see that kind of morphing over time when you have a facility that makes it easy to do that. So they could get a premise permit now for one truck without any problem. But if they want to have multiple trucks and other activities like carnivals or whatever, you know, they'll have to come back through the board to get that seasonal events conditional use as well.
So Eric, since you're there, it's my understanding, you know, if this is a parking lot, it will be installed, it will be a parking lot, it will be available for use as a parking lot. There aren't limitations on hours or seasonal use of the parking lot?
Generally, no. There wouldn't be unless there was limitations on the county park system's hours of operation or, or if, you know, they, certainly the board could establish that. We don't actually require the lighting necessarily, but certainly a good idea for security purposes. And knowing what we see in our underutilized parking areas downtown, they may have to take measures to secure their lot during certain hours, too.
Gotcha. Okay.
So when you're, or you're being asked to have it open 24/7, you might take that into consideration, too, about what, what special measures might have to occur down the road.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. So applicant, you've got up to three minutes to address the board with any closing. Anything you want to add?
Yes. Thank you. Completely agree with Carol on building more surface parking lots and adding to that. So, yeah, we understand that. It's, it is something we have to do. Eric brings up a great question for planning events. We already kind of know that this parking lot will kind of serve as like a staging area, mobilization area for when the do tour comes. They come in and they bring their buses and the TV buses that come in. This is likely an area they'll be staging. It's probably reasonable for C, if an actual event is held in this parking lot, I don't know. Right now, we're not foreseeing any of that, but it is reasonable to perhaps think that in the future. Under our agreement with the city, we do have the right to kind of close down the left half of the parking lot for, for that mobilization of the do tour events. And then that second driveway... And then, that second driveway, or that driveway to the north and that bank of parking would always be open left for the dog park users. And in the discussions of this, we are putting gates on those two driveways. Operations-wise, we're still in discussions with Des Moines PD. We started more police enforcement out there after, at the skate park after some recent events.
Right.
That comment to put the gates came from Des Moines PD to disperse those crowds from the skate park. They're fearing those crowds would just move over to the parking lot. So, we will install gates. We're still in discussions of how we're going to operate those gates. So, we're open to feedback from the board on those discussions, because those are ongoing.
Gotcha. Yep. Okay. All right. Anything else we want to ask, Valleys here? Yes?
The dog park, would it be losing square footage?
No. So, the dog park and the parking lot, it's an equal land trade. We're just almost just taking the dog park and shifting it up, and that vacant space is equivalent to the parking lot space. So, it's a one-to-one ratio.
Is there anybody from law enforcement who might be able to answer the question about hours to speak?
Well, I would probably say since Adam is the applicant, he represents those that will be managing it, he would be able to talk to that as best as possible.
I'll try. So, you know, right now, across the board, our operation hours are from dawn to dusk.
Right.
You know, if, we all know kind of that the skate park is kind of a different animal. So, we'll still kind of look at that, evaluate that, to see if those hours are still meeting our goals and our needs, because we, our Conservation Board does have the right to change those hours as they see fit.
Right. And this is a conditional use, so it's kind of like if you give somebody a driver's license, there's conditions, so, you know, it can impair and has to safeguard the general health, safety, and welfare of persons in the area. So, if we have a problem after you've built your expensive parking lot, we could come back and say, hey, we're going to take away your conditional use to operate this because you haven't managed it very well. And usually, you don't want to see that happen, and we don't like to do that.
Right.
But, good, bad, or indifferent, I know that down along the riverfront, you know, when I was in high school, we would drive on the east side down past Botanical Center, there was a turnaround down there. Oh, yeah, Rhonda.
Yeah.
But, I have heard that there's a time or two where, yeah, there's been unfortunately some activities at the skate park. You're going to have that anywhere, some playground equipment just burned up in Clive. But, I think the biggest concern would be, you know, if we do grant this, that you keep an eye on things. You work with, you know, your management as well as City of Des Moines, and make sure it's managed effectively.
Absolutely.
Because I would see this potentially as an asset, not just for people using the skate park, but if I wanted to maybe come down there with my bicycle, I may not ride the whole way down, but if I would come down there, I would be able to use the dog park, I'd be able to use the trail. I might even park there and walk over to Wells Fargo Arena for a concert. We used to do that at the city lot at the Armory till I think you guys dropped the gates on us. So, well, Adam, I think you've answered our questions the best possible, so appreciate your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing then and go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts or ideas or motions? And I might just say, just for clarity, the criteria that the board has to consider are among those that have been listed in the agenda. We aren't policymakers ourselves. We carry out the city's policy, which is carrying out the zoning ordinance and our duties and therein limitations. So, from the perspective of the nine criteria that the applicant has to meet, are there any questions or comments regarding that? This is our discussion. Anyone? Would there be a motion to grant the requested appeal by anybody?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm going to get used to this. So, bike parking, do we see that probably included in it? So, it's, I think any...
Like bike racks and stuff like that? I would assume that they would have that, since this is a vehicle parking lot, the main thing, I think, is the vehicle aspect.
Okay.
For size and numbers of spaces, stuff like that. And sometimes, we don't necessarily, you know, if it's a quid pro quo, if they want something special, maybe we can ask for a little something different, but generally, we look at what they've proposed, and if it meets the requirements, we don't usually add in necessarily bells and whistles. But I would think, Adam, I'm not going to bring you up, but I'm assuming you're going to have some bike racks, right? Yeah. Does that help, Heather Ann? Okay. Justin?
Chair, yeah, and looking at this criteria before the board here, it looks like this proposal meets the criteria. It looks like there's, it's going to serve the purpose for three sets of groups of people, you know, those that are biking, those that are using the dog park, and those that are using the skate park. It doesn't look like we're losing any sort of square footage for the dog park, which is great. So, I'm in favor of approving this proposal today, and I'll put it as a motion for staff recommendation.
Second. All right, so we have a motion by Justin, a second by Tom. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries six-zero for that. Okay, all right. We look forward to seeing how all that turns out as an asset on our Des Moines River recreational corridor. Okay, then going back to the agenda, we'll now look at item two, which is a conditional use request in the vicinity of 2142 East Market, and Shreyoshi's going to give us the background on that one.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, Shreyoshi Chakrabarti, planning staff, I'm going to give you a quick presentation on item two. This is a conditional use request for a junk or salvage yard use in an I-2 industrial district. The specific proposal that we have before you is conditional use for a recycled concrete processing and batch plant business, which is a junk and salvage yard use that includes a staging area for recycled aggregate, rock, dirt, fill, crusher conveyors, excavators, et cetera, and other equipment as accessory to the primary use. I'm going to show you here in the map the subject property. So, the subject property is zoned I-2 and limited I-2 district. It includes a few parcels, as you can see, along East Market Street. The subject property is also within close proximity to the north side of East Martin-Luther King Jr. Parkway. And the subject property is primarily in a heavy industrial area, and the property itself includes the Dean Lake, if you can see where my cursor is right here, and it also includes dense vegetation. There is a parcel here along East Market that currently includes an existing business. The appellant intends to lease portions of these parcels to allow the proposed concrete Okay, so this is a site sketch. It's a very, it's a rough conceptual sketch that was provided to city staff earlier, and it gives you a general idea of what's being proposed. So, as you can see, there's a proposal to have a parking lot, a concrete crusher in the back. Here's Dean Lake right here. There's proposed, this proposed outdoor storage along East Market right here, where you can see the two circles. So, that's kind of generally the layout that the applicant has proposed, and it's a conceptual sketch, not the site plan. So, it's a rough idea of what's proposed. I have some pictures here to give you a context of the site. This is looking directly into the parcel along East Market that has the existing business in operation. This is just another view. This is looking east, along East Market towards downtown, or west, rather, towards downtown. And then, this is looking east. And as I mentioned, this is in close proximity to the MLK Jr. Parkway. This is, this is the corridor right here. As you can see, there's a slight elevation distance, so, a difference, so it kind of sits up right here. So, if you are traveling along East MLK Corridor, then you have a view of the subject property because it's slightly elevated. So, I wanted to give you a brief background. There is some zoning history to this. Just try and get there here. So, the appellant had previously requested for a rezoning, so the parcel, the parcels that are immediately adjacent to the existing business, they were zoned I-1. The appellant had requested the rezoning to I-2, so that was granted by city council earlier this year. It was, it was a limited I-2 industrial district that was granted, subject to the two conditions that are outlined here. The property shall be brought into conformance with current City of Des Moines site plan standards. The second condition was, any adjoining property used or developed in common with the subject property shall comply with condition one, and that's primarily because the parcel that includes the existing business was not part of the rezoning. So, it was, the condition is there to just ensure that when the entire site is developed, that a parcel is taken into consideration as well and brought into conformance. So, the staff has reviewed the criteria, and with respect to staff's rationale, staff thinks that the appellant has satisfied the criteria necessary for granting, granting a conditional use to allow the use of the property as a junk and salvage yard business that includes a recycling business. Any use of the site for such use must be in accordance with site plan and approved by Development Services and satisfies all conditions of approval. In staff's decision-making, we think that the use is appropriate for that area, given it's an industrial area, that there would be minimal impacts to the adjacent properties so long as the conditions of approval are met, and I'm going to try and zoom out a little bit here, so you can, staff is recommending approval subject to these conditions, and they are outlined here and also included in the staff report. Staff believes that as long as the supplemental regulations are met, the site design regulations are met, and the supplement, and the conditions of approval are met, that there would be minimal impact, and staff is supportive of the conditional use request. And recommending approval. I did pass around a packet to you all, paper copy of a few letters that we received from the legal representatives of the applicant, as well as an adjoining neighbor that is in opposition to this conditional use request, and I have the letters up here in my presentation as well. The letters are fairly lengthy, so I hope you got a chance to scan through them, but I can also just go through these one by one, so you have a chance to look at them. But this, this letter is from a neighboring business owner, Kemen Industries, that is specifically opposed to this conditional use request, given their concerns with some of the impacts that this particular use might have on their property and their business. And please let me know at any time if you want me to zoom in or hang out for a couple more minutes, if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, and Shreyoshi, you gave us a printed copy of these as well, so I'm kind of passing them down. So, board members take a peek at those, and when this site is through, I'll send them down here, but you can also read what's on the screen.
This was a map that was submitted with the letter, which shows the impact of the use on some of the adjacent properties as they relate to dust pollution in the air and...
And when you say the impact on the adjacent properties, do you mean the adjacent property's vicinity to this location?
I believe, I think that this, from what I'm interpreting from the letter, is that they're trying to, because of the proximity to this particular use, they feel like these businesses could be impacted by the potential pollution from the dust particles. And I will point out that this letter came to us last month for the previous Board of Adjustment meeting. Since then, the applicant continued the items so that they could have one-on-one discussions with Kemen Industries, which I believe they did, and an updated letter was submitted to us yesterday by their legal counsel, which essentially still points out that they appreciated the opportunity to visit with the applicant, however, they continue to have the same concerns. And so, we have an updated letter from them, which is right here, and highlights some of the same concerns that you saw in the, in the previous letter that was presented.
And again, this is the same thing that's up on the screen, but if you want to read along in print.
And finally, we did also, accompanying the letter, we also received a couple declarations from two of their employees that have significant knowledge and expertise in this particular area, and they've provided some additional information regarding their concerns as well. So, this is the first one, and then we have a second one as well. I'm happy to come back to these again if needed. Just wanted to move forward to another letter. This is from the legal representative of the applicant, and this is essentially outlining the various criteria and making a case that the applicant has provided, meets the criteria, and also has made an effort to remediate some of the concerns that, that the adjacent property owner has brought forward, so that, this is a summary of that. There were some pictures that were attached, and I'm going to just skim through these because I think the applicant will go into further details of each, each one of these proposed mitigation measures that they have, they have outlined, and they provided us a brief summary as well, that they're going to... And they provided us a brief summary as well, that they're going to use certain technology and methodologies that would help mitigate some of the concerns that were brought forward by, by the adjacent property owner. So I'll let the applicant go into that during their presentation. I'm going to just scan through these really quickly. We received one comment letter in support, and here is the consent map. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to go back to any of the information.
Okay. Do we have some questions for Trey Oshie? I've got a very brief one. I'm assuming that perhaps the applicant will touch on this. But city staff is recommending approval, correct?
Yes.
So then staff feels that the site and its operations will not cause an undue impact on adjoining properties, correct?
That is correct. Staff has recommended approval with 10, I believe it's 10, conditions. And so staff's, staff believes that as long as those conditions are met and all the supplemental regulations, as well as site planning, design standards are followed, the use would not have a negative impact on their adjoining properties.
And your conditions that you've suggested or are proposing, some of those do go to controlling dust, correct?
I, I believe they do. The applicant has also indicated additional mitigation measures and state-of-the-art technology that they are proposing to use, which we feel will help with, with that as well. But a lot of the, the concerns also had to do with the appearance of the, of the business and the impact that would have on the adjacent areas, which I believe that, staff believes that the design regulations under Chapter 135 and the supplemental regulations address those.
Okay. And Trey Oshie, I'm not going to put you on the spot on this one if you're not aware, but I'm assuming that industrial operations like this have to comply with federal, state, and even county air quality regulations to operate. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right. So, so the zoning board of adjustment is not the only quote "air quality" or "environmental control" here to this operation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Trey Oshie? Okay. Thanks for a good start on this one. All right. It's the applicant's turn. Applicant or the representative of the applicant, you can step forward. We just need your name, address. And again, I'll just remind you, you've got 10 minutes to present your request for your conditional use.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kelly Orton. I'm an attorney with the Brownwinic Firm. My address is 666 Grand Avenue, Suite 2000 in Des Moines, 50309. I'm here on behalf of Wilson Aggregate. I also have Dan Wilson here with Wilson Aggregate, and he's going to be speaking with you in a few moments about the technology that was mentioned by city staff. We are here for a conditional use permit for recycled concrete processing in a batch plant in order to obtain our conditional use permit. Obviously, we have certain conditions that need to be met that are set forth in the ordinance. You guys have all seen the staff report. The staff fully believes that we have met all of our requirements, even with reading Kemen's objections. We also obviously believe that we have met all of the conditions for the, under the ordinance. There are four conditions that Kemen will argue today, I know they have a representative here, that will argue today that we have not met. The first one is that the proposed geographic location and operation of use or activity adequately safeguards the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in adjoining or surrounding property. One thing that is really important in that provision is that we are speaking about the health and safety of persons, not plants. Their, Kemen's concern with the dust specifically focuses on the impact that it may have on their plants. There is no discussion about any impact on their employees or any other persons in the area. So obviously, that condition has been met. The next condition they are going to say has not been met is that the proposed use will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to the surrounding building. My read of the ordinance and the specific condition is that we can't put a skyscraper up that's going to take away all of their access to light. We're obviously not doing that, and therefore, we have met this condition. They're going to say that there will be some dust that's going to be on the greenhouses, and that's going to take away their, their access to light. That just happens in the normal operations of cars driving by, there's gravel in this area. There's actually another concrete facility immediately to the south of their buildings. And therefore, our project is not going to be restricting any access to light. Next, they're going to say that the proposed use will diminish or impair the established nearby property values. Nowhere in any of their letters did they state that their property value would be decreased. They may be stating that their company value might decrease if something happens to these plants, but that has no impact on the property value. The property can still be sold at the value that it's at. And finally, they're going to state that the proposed use will have a significant detrimental impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining properties. Again, they have no evidence of this. This proposed use is going, is going in a heavy industrial area, of which a concrete processing facility is allowed under a conditional use permit, as evidenced by the already operating concrete processing facility that is immediately south of Kemen's property, facility. I might note here that Kemen put their facility in place after this other concrete processing facility was already in place. So they knew where they were building this concrete facility, and they knew that there was going to be a dust concern. And it wasn't, didn't appear to be a concern to them when they installed this greenhouse. I also wanted to note that if we were to produce dust, which Dan's going to speak about the mitigations efforts that we are making to not produce dust, the prevailing winds are most likely going to be blowing that dust in the opposite direction because our proposed facility is located to the north and the east of Kemen's facility. Generally, the, the wind comes from the west, unlike the existing facility that is, again, immediately south and would be blowing, has, and has been blowing dust into Kemen's facilities. Now, Kemen's also produced experts. You guys saw those expert, expert reports about the impacts on the plants and things like that. But neither of these experts are experts in concrete processing. However, Dan is. And Dan's been in the industry for several years, and he's going to know what type of machinery, what type of processes are going to reduce the impact of dust. So at this time, I want to have Dan come up and kind of talk about the machinery that they intend to use and the impacts that it's going to have on the dust production.
Okay. Dan, just give us your complete name and your address, please.
Yes, I'm Dan Wilson, and the property concerned is 2142 East Market Street. But I'm the owner of the two companies involved. I own the companies with my sons. We're not big in what we do, but from a construction company standpoint, we did do the Yater Creek project, we did Closest Creek, we've done Hamilton Phase 2 and Hamilton Phase 3. That's $30 million worth of work we've done for the City of Des Moines. We use a lot of rock, and I don't know how to work, how to push the button.
We'll see what happens. Or staff, there we go, yeah.
It's up. Okay, here we go. So this is a picture of the crusher. This is the crusher that we plan to use here. The crushing, concrete crushing's been around for a long time. New concrete crushing, there's a lot of technology that's been added to that. The arrow up the top, there's, there's a place to put, put water and other substances directly after the, after the crusher. And each time the product falls through the, through the crusher, we spray more material on it. So every chance, every opportunity for there dust to be created in this, in this crushing process, we're spraying water on it. Now, that water can be sprayed with surfactants and other products to help that. I don't think it's needed. The product, the crushers that I've seen operate, operate without dust. This is incredible. This is the product, the aggregate product, the recycled product, exiting conveyor. There's something called a dust boss that sprays water or surfactant products right on the material as it leaves the crusher. We believe that we can crush concrete without dust. Now, will there be dust from trucks traveling up and down the road that's already existing? So we, but certainly, we believe that we can create concrete without dust. From a site plan perspective, this gives you a little bit better visual of what's going on. In the center of this project at the crusher, and to the south and west towards Kemen, we have a vegetative barrier. And that vegetative barrier is existing, so we don't have to plant it and wait for it to grow. What we envision is to create an eight-foot-tall opaque fence along those trees with 20 to 40-foot trees immediately following that, with 70 to 80-foot-tall cottonwood trees that are existing in this property to protect, protect it. That protects two things. It protects any potential dust, potential noise, and potential site from Martin Luther King. So all these piles of stuff here are going to be behind the trees. Also, the parking that is here, parking against the street will no longer be allowed. All that, all, everything along East Market Street will be cleaned up, planted to grass and mowed with a lawnmower to clean up this area. This cleans up the area, it also cleans up the homeless that live here, the garbage that's placed in this facility. This really does add value to the, to the whole area. I don't think we should minimize that because the city needs to change that image and create good places, and this certainly does that. All of the parking that you see that's currently parking in the porta potty business that's there, all of that will be paved. So there, we clearly clean things up and make it, make it better.
Dan, you've got about two minutes here, so give me a little heads up.
I'm good. If, if you have any questions, we tickle to answer.
You've got it. You're welcome to continue.
That's the vision that we see for this process. We see creating recycled concrete. That's recycling concrete without dust. And that can happen in the city. If you have any questions, we tickle to answer them.
Okay. Questions for Dan? I'll just, yeah.
I just have one more thing that I'd like to say.
Sure.
While we are sensitive of Kemen's sensitivity to, to dust in the area, you know, they, again, they chose to build this facility in, in a heavy industrial area. And just because of their sensitivity does not increase our burden on these conditions. We have met all of the conditions, and therefore, we ask that the permit be approved.
Cool. All right. So I'm going to lead off with a couple of questions here, Kelly. And Dan, you're welcome to jump in here, too. So Dan, Dan is the applicant here. You're talking about what you're proposing to do here, but do you have business experience? Have you already been doing concrete recycling at other locations?
Yes, we have. We currently are doing concrete recycling east of Des Moines right now, today. We use a lot of this product in our construction here. So the use of this product is substantial in the last several years.
Okay. And with your operations for everything from, you know, again, concrete recycling or just, just managing a, a site where you might be producing aggregate, are you subject to federal and state and county air quality regulations?
As far as I know, I wouldn't know why we wouldn't be.
Okay. Are you aware of any permits you've had to take out for previous operations to ensure air quality?
No, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. All right. Kelly, anything you want to add to that?
I think if there were any issues, the EPA would already be talking to Dan.
All right. And one other question, I see Waste Solutions of Iowa's list, is that kind of the porta potty thing that's down there? Is, is that going to continue to be there?
So what we've done, we've purchased that property and the porta, Waste Solutions of Iowa. I should be careful.
Sure, sure. Well, yes, yes. At least I'm not calling it a kivo place.
Yeah, there you go. But Waste Solutions of Iowa is encroaching a prom property that we've leased from other people. And we're, we're taking our time to, to do this right and treat people like they should be treated.
Right.
But they would be going away. That would be our own facility, and properties on either side, east and west, would be leased properties with more 10-year-plus leases.
Okay. So Waste Solutions of Iowa is eventually not going to be on East Market Street in this vicinity?
That's correct.
And just, not to use the pun, put it on the table, but they, they manage human solid waste at that facility, right?
That's correct. And that cleans up this whole neighborhood.
Okay. Pun intended there, maybe.
Yes.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for Kelly or Dan from the board?
Just one. You talked about earlier, there's already dust in the area from trucks. How much more, how many more trucks will be traveling in this area carrying aggregate in and out?
That's a good question, and there's probably more trucks in the area because of us. We'd like to think that we can clean up that, but the trucks that we're putting in the area are trucks that are putting right on a paved road. So that should, we're not going to get dust off of our truck, off the cargo in the truck. We would get dust off the paved road. And I don't think there's a substantial paved road dust risk, especially when we take our parking lot and all of the area that's here, and we pave it.
So when they're bringing materials into your, your area, those trucks aren't going to be spewing any dust?
No, no.
They're all covered?
No, no, that, from, this is from my experience, because I've, I've hauled thousands of loads of broken concrete. That, the, the, once the concrete leaves wherever it's coming from, the, whatever dust is there goes away in the first 100 feet, and by the time it gets dust, there's no dust.
Yes.
Yes.
Dan, you mentioned a couple mitigation treatments that you're, you're talking about, Crusher Littman 4800 or whatever that picture was. The dust boss.
Yep.
Are these things you've already bought? Have you used these equipment already? Or how are we assured that you're going to use this treatment for mitigation factors?
Okay. That, that evidence of assurance that it's going to get used is right here in a recorded session, so that, that's one thing. Some of it is in current existence on the current equipment that we have that we're using. We'll add additional equipment, and this dust boss thing, that will be additional equipment now, too. We're not currently processing in this county.
And, and Dan, we, in our discussion on the last item, we reinforced, staff's recommending approval for what you're requesting, but even if this was to be approved, it's what's called a conditional use, which means, yes, you'd be granted permission, but you have to follow these requirements. And if you don't, and staff has complaints, and they feel it's founded that you are causing an impact that's undue to others, they could drag you back in here and in front of this board, and they could say, hey, we gave you a chance, and gosh, you messed up, and, you know, you're dusting out everybody. Sorry, we're taking this away. So you do realize that if we would grant approval here, it is, you'd have to meet these conditions and not cause an undue impact. You understand that?
I understand that perfectly. We've got a couple billion dollars here that that's, we can do it.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anything else for the applicant? Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Start with support. Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Come on up, sir. Just need your name, address is appropriate. You've got up to five minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Paxton Williams. I'm with Bell and McCormick Law Firm, 666 Walnut Street, Suite 2000, Des Moines, representing Kemen Industries. You've seen our letters, you've seen the declarations from our experts. The issue for Kemen is the dust, the micro-dust and the microparticles. As you may know, Kemen supplies specialty ingredients for several industries, including human health and nutrition, animal health, animal, pet health and nutrition, and crop technologies. In 2017, Kemen invested more than $30 million to open a new worldwide headquarters near the site of the conditional use request. In 2021, Kemen broke ground on a $4.5 million expansion of its headquarters campus. I mention this because Kemen has a 10,000-square-foot greenhouse located on East Market Street. This is where Kemen does most of its primary breeding work for their proprietary specialty crops. The appellant's proposed activities will produce concrete dust that will travel through the air and that will cook, that will put Kemen's property between two concrete dust emitters. It was mentioned that Kemen's growth occurred while there was already one concrete dust emitter there. Uh... emitter there. That may be true, but at the time, there was no expectation that a second concrete dust emitter would be there, because as shared with you earlier by city staff, that zoning change just occurred earlier this summer. You received the map, we saw it earlier, of the proposed site that indicates the direction of the northerly winds that blow south and west across Kemen's property. Also shared in our materials was the fact that not only does concrete dust have various components, such as silica, that are not good to breathe, and this is referenced in, I believe, both of my letters, the declaration with scientific references to support that, and that speaks to the factor one in terms of the health involved. And it's also very difficult on plants, and we've provided lots of reference studies and the declarations and materials to support that. And as mentioned, Kemen currently deals with concrete dust from their neighbor, South Owen-Murray Street. The air handler systems that Kemen has for some of their buildings, we could continue to work with those, but as mentioned, Kemen does not have any protection for the outside grow areas and the greenhouse. And currently, the greenhouse is situated away from the current dust exposure to reduce dust contamination from the concrete plant on Murray Street. So the plants in the greenhouse contain some of Kemen's patent-protected germplasm, and it's extremely valuable in supporting 40% of Kemen's product portfolio. And if these plants become contaminated with concrete dust, as the experts contend could occur, it could potentially kill or alter the plants and diminish their value. Kemen's greenhouse has an open ventilation system that has cooling pads and vents on the side, side walls and on top of the roof. This system allows unfiltered air into the greenhouse. And while we're thinking about dust, it's important to note that what we're talking about here, these are very small particles, at least 100 times smaller than the ordinary sand that you might find on beaches and in playgrounds. And a citation for that is provided in the materials shared with you. Also provided in the material shared with you, there's a discussion on what is called the silification of plants, and that is where silica seeps into the voids of other materials, such as cells, tissues, and organs of plants. And this micro silicon particles in the air that could not be stopped by the appellant's planned mitigation efforts, those could be absorbed passively into the surface cells to form silified cells. This might not otherwise be important in any particular standard, everyday life, but given the work of Kemen, its worldwide efforts, and the functions of what it provides, this is extraordinarily important. And to speak to the factors that have to be met, again, we believe four factors, the appellant fails on four factors. For number one, we talked about how the silica makes it hard to breathe, and there's a citation for that. Also mentioned is the impairment to the adequate supply of light and surrounding property. Also mentioned is the proposed use could diminish or impair established nearby properties, and this is because of the nuisance the permit would produce. Again, it's one thing to have one concrete creating factory in the area, but it's another to have multiple. And clearly, we believe that there is a significant detrimental impact on the use of Kemen's property. And there was some talk by the appellant that we can't change the burden that they have because of our use. But if you look at factor seven, it speaks of the use of the adjoining properties. It doesn't say if the use of the adjoining property is something that is, thank you, is something that is often expected or not expected. And here, Kemen's use is well-known, it's a very big factor. Kemen has worked hard to protect the facilities and the lands in which it does its work, because of the nature of their work, it's extraordinarily important. And again, to the extent an argument could be made that this area is made for this, again, this zoning policy just changed. The zoning of this area just changed earlier this summer. And so, again, even as Kemen deals with the concrete dust from their neighbor, South Owen-Murray Street, the facts and the research suggests that granting of a conditional use permit to the appellant would have a significant detrimental impact on Kemen's properties. Both of the declarations state that, and as was shared earlier, Kemen representatives met with Wilson Aggregate representatives earlier this month, and it was clear, Wilson Aggregate shared then that only 5%, they believed that 5% of the dust that they would create would not be mitigated, would escape. And we see that, yes.
I granted you five minutes. I gave you a minute extension. I got to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. But if we do have any questions, would you be willing to take a few questions?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? I've just got a couple here, and first of all, a statement. I know how important Kemen Industries is to the city of Des Moines as an employer, as a biotechnology industry. Your investment down there has been incredible. You've helped change kind of a little bit of the face of that part of the city. That's to be commended. I know that over the years, there were a bunch of junkyards down there, there was a hazardous waste drum recycling site, there were a lot of issues that Kemen had with things like rodents and animals that could carry disease down there. I think the city's tried to work to make sure the neighbors can get along down there, but it's still an industrial district. And I guess, just to clarify, you said that this greenhouse has open ventilation and unfiltered air, right?
Yes.
So you have three major railroads that cross right northeast of your property between this location and Kemen Industries. Those are diesel-electric motors. They emit particulate matter. Is that not a concern for your plants and their health? How is this a greater concern than the existing conditions that are already there?
This is a greater concern to the extent that it's additional. It's new. We've studied, Kemen has studied what it produces, what it receives in terms of its air quality. And so the issue here is that this is a new concern that was unexpected, again, just because of the, even the zoning change of earlier this summer.
Okay, okay. And is your facility subject to federal, state, and county air permitting regulations, like for any kind of equipment, venting, hoods?
Yes, sir.
Chimneys, right?
Yes.
So would you think this operation would also have those same federal, state, and county air quality regulations they'd have to comply with besides our zoning conditional use?
We would presume and hope so.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Williams? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Perfect.
Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Zoning enforcement officer, would you like to address the board?
Eric Lundey, Deputy Director, Neighborhood Services.
I should call you that.
I wanted to caution you on the, some statements made by both interests here. First of all, yes, this was recently zoned. That was a, that was an action of the city council that determines their intent of what this property should be used for, the way the code treats it. The code definitely creates this as a conditional use. There was some question originally whether this would be considered a different use description, but given the potential impacts and everything, this was determined to be something that fell into the junk and salvage description, which includes recycling activity just by its, the nature of the impacts that it potentially could create. Now, the fact that the council did determine this is the heaviest industrial area, that would be the only zoning in the entire city where this type of use could be considered. Now, they make it a conditional use because that allows the board to put special conditions on this to mitigate any of the concerns that they may hear or believe would occur with the use. You might have noted that criteria seven was mentioned. I think that clearly gives the board the ability to consider any testimony on that. And I'll let Gary step in if there's any other points of evidentiary rule or anything here. This is not a court of law. We're a quasi-judicial hearing, not a court, so the burden of evidence is a little different than it would be if it got to that level. But certainly, the thing that you should understand is, if you want to put conditions on that will allow this to meet the criteria because of other things that you heard here today, you certainly can do that. That also then puts the burden on staff to enforce that, so if we see a pattern of violations of those conditions, we can certainly bring it back. If there's an attainment issue or, you know, the state comes in and is finding regularly on air quality, that's something that we could certainly then bring back to you to reconsider the use. So there is that safety valve, as Mel had mentioned already, but I did want to point that out. So when you look at those nine criteria, I think there's quite a bit of leeway as to what you can consider that was presented to you in terms of what meets evidence, what doesn't, so.
Okay. And Eric, just, and I'll try to put a box around this and clarify it. So the idea that, you know, this wasn't zoned for this before, the historic zoning of this property under the current ordinance or the city's most recent one, uses that would have been allowed would still have been industrial uses, such as maybe a concrete batch plant to produce concrete or to handle aggregate materials.
Historically, potentially, yes.
Okay.
So although I don't know if you really have to go back and consider that, I think you are able to look at what the council legislative action to rezone this property was and what should be allowed to be considered, so.
But generally, historically, this wasn't residential, this wasn't neighborhood, commercial. The uses in this area were related to industrial processes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know if the board has to go and establish, you know, what use and enjoyment is, but I think you can consider anything that was brought to you today.
Okay, all right. I've got you. Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions we have for staff? All right, seeing none. Applicant or representative of the applicant, you've got up to three minutes if you'd like to provide any rebuttals or closing comments before we go to our board deliberation.
Thank you. I apologize, I'm probably going to jump around a little bit. This might not be the most flowing rebuttal. The, there was a mention of a 5% of dust will still be admitted number. That number was never presented by my client. My client anticipates that there will be very little to know dust. I don't know where that 5% number came from, so I just wanted to clarify that. As the city has mentioned, this was previously zoned as I-1, it's now I-2. There are plenty of other properties in the area that are currently and have been zoned I-2. The intent of the city was clearly to have some sort of facility like this in place. So for Kemen to say that it is a complete surprise to them that something like this would come in, it is a little surprising to me that they would say that. The fact that Kemen has, only has issues with this because it's a new emitter, even despite all of the mitigation efforts that we're putting in place, tells me that any sort of industrial use that's going to go in that place is going to meet opposition by Kemen. I don't, I don't know what's going to make them happy, but if you would like this area developed, you're going to have to have some sort of emissions come out. And again, we've taken all of the precautions that we can. Kemen mentioned that they have cool pads that are used as a filtration system in their buildings. Those filter, they, those are saturated with water, which is exactly the way that we intend to filter our dust, to make sure that it's not being emitted into the air. So if it's good enough for them, it should be good enough for us to prevent dust from impacting their facilities. Again, just because Kemen has an, is ultra-sensitive to dust in their facilities and has these open greenhouses, we don't believe that that should make it, you know, our conditions even more strict. And finally, I lost my spot. I don't remember where I was going with that, so I apologize. But again, you know, we've taken all the mitigation efforts that we possibly could, and the area is zoned for this. We've met all the conditions. The staff agrees that we've met all conditions. Obviously, we agree that we've met all conditions, so we ask that our conditional use permit be approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, you go ahead and sit down. We'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts from the board?
I guess, Chair, just kind of a point of discussion. I'm interested in knowing what other members think about, you know, they talk about these mitigation efforts that they're going to take. I'm wondering, are those mitigation efforts that we can put in as a conditional use? As a condition for the use?
How would you want to describe those? Like, you must keep your hose and mister on during all times of operation.
No, you don't want to micromanage.
Right, right.
I'm just trying to, like, these overall, overarching items that they mentioned, that they assured us that they're going to do, yes, it's good practice for them to do that, but, you know, maybe we leave it up to then Kemen to come back and, you know, have city get involved, and then there's a complaint, and then it's back in front of us. I mean, I guess that's kind of the backstop here, right? Again, I'm just kind of bringing it up for discussion purposes.
Under item eight, best practical control technologies shall be employed to minimize any dust. If I, if I, yeah, if I simplify that sentence, best practical control technologies shall be employed to minimize any dust. So that would be what's generally acceptable in the industry or would be, I would assume, to be required under any permitting. Item nine says that any required license or permit from the Iowa DNR shall provide valid license or permit as applicable. So if they need to comply with air quality regulations at the state and federal level, I think the DNR handles those.
Yep, all right.
So I kind of feel, you know.
It's in there.
Yeah, yeah, we kind of get on the target.
Okay.
But then to hit the bullseye, that's, to me, that's usually the job of the applicant. We've given you the framework, you've got to fill in, paint by the numbers now.
Yeah, okay.
Fill it in. But again, that's just kind of how I would see it, because I'm with you as well. I want something in there that says, yeah, you're going to pay attention to how you operate. Without, again, and I'll just say it, without us having to micromanage, because when we do that, then staff has to micromanage, and they have to have kind of a little red line in their file and go check stuff out then a little more often. Any other thoughts?
The only thing I would add is just that, you know, the, Kemen and their opposition to it, certainly sensitive to that, they are a good member of our community.
Definitely.
I just don't think it rises to that level of significant detrimental impact. It's too remote. We don't know at this point if there is going to be any impact.
Right.
It's sort of speculative at this point.
Yeah.
So I don't think it, the opposition really rises to that level, and so I would, I guess I would be in favor of approving staff recommendations.
Okay, so we got a motion there and a second.
Certainly don't want to start voting unless there's other people that want to.
No, I'm agreeing with you. That, and the same thing that all these, all these have to be met with before, and they're aware of that. They've done this before, so I'm thinking, let's see how it goes.
You know, a lot of times when we, when we see these things, the audience might say, oh, well, it's just a picture on a paper. Gosh, I don't know where that's at unless I'm, unless somebody tells me. I know this area well. I used to ride dirt bikes around down here where I shouldn't have. The Union Pacific Railroad probably didn't appreciate me down there, but I'm very familiar with that area. This has always been a very heavy industrial and frankly, not the prettiest area.
Or smell.
Or smell, and again, going back to Kemen, they've made a lot of changes there, but there are areas of town where there is a need and a place to get certain things done. Auto-recycling locations, concrete paving recycling locations. We need to have zoning for those, and we do, and this would be allowable for zoning with a conditional use. And I feel like they're presenting visual barriers, fences, trees, landscaping, hard pavement of surfaces that aren't already dust control. And gosh, we're going to be moving a porta potty place that delivers and transfers human waste around. I would think that that would be a big concern if I would drop down to see a place that makes food-grade materials. Ugh. But yeah, the whole dust thing, I've got a, I've got a glass coffee table, well, an outdoor deck table, sits on our deck. I'm nowhere near gravel road. I'm nowhere near a concrete recycler, but every third day, I got to clean that off with Windex. You can wipe your finger on it. There's dust in an urban setting. It comes from all kinds of stuff, and I can't point my finger at where that dust comes from on my table. And my table's not up for debate today, but I don't think that we can say that there will be X amount of increase of dust there as well. I think somebody I think somebody really have to present something to a much greater degree, and I think we have controls here to deal with that. So Justin, if you've, you've got a motion, was that a second by Rhonda? Oh, a second by Marlis. That would be for staff recommendation, subject, subject to the criteria presented or the conditions presented, correct? Okay, so we've got a motion to grant the conditional use with the conditions presented. All those that would be in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Okay, that motion carries six to zero. So Dan, I wish you well with your business to fit in down there. Recycling of all kinds of things is an important part of our economy as well, so you'll be part of that, just like Kevin, Kemen's an important part with what they do. So we thank all of you for your investment in our city. Okay, that will move us on then to our next item, which we did skip item three, that was continued to next month, that'll bring us to item four, another conditional use request in the vicinity of 1300 Southeast First, and Frank is going to give us a summary on this one.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Item, item four is located at, within the vicinity of 1300 Southeast First Street. The proposal is use of the premises for up to three year, three special events per month for a period of five years to end May 31st, 2028. I'd like to note that previously the board had issued a special permit for this proposal that expired 20, May of 2023. So the applicant, therefore, since it expired, is back in front of us today requesting a conditional use. I would like to also note that the special permit at that time was the vehicle per that previous zoning code. It has since changed, so now it is a conditional use for approval of a temporary use. And so they are asking for the above number that would typically be approved administratively. So the property in question is highlighted here in yellow. It is a 1.6 acre parcel that is zone DXR. There are multiple parcels there, one containing the restaurant and then the surface parking and then the area that they intend to continue use for the special events. And here is a view of the parking lot. And this would be facing west. This too would be facing southwest. Another southwest shot. And this is the area where the special events occur. And here are the parameters of the area for which they are proposing to have the temporary use occupy. It is consistent with what was originally presented and approved. Staff is recommending, once again, to approve the proposal with the same conditions as were presented previously. It is believed to be in harmony with the essential character of the neighborhood so long as it's, operates in accordance with the recommended conditions of approval. Here is a consent map and it shows the neighbors that had provided correspondence to us comments. These neighbors in green are in favor of the proposal. Couple of comment cards. And here are the details of the neighborhood meeting that had occurred. From the summary, there are a couple, I believe, three folks that attended the neighborhood meeting, and there were questions regarding the participation in neighborhood association activities as well as concerns raised about the impacts on parking and then continued revitalization of that area such as beautification efforts that are taking place and how would they continue to be a part of that. And that is all I have. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions for Frank? Okay, all right, thank you Frank, I think we're good for now. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant, come on down. You've got up to 10 minutes, we just need you to kick off with your name and address and give us your reasoning for your conditional use.
My name's Amy Nicholson, 1300 Southeast First Street is the address. We are just asking to continue on with being able to hold our special events that we've had five years prior. We've had no issues with those. We always obtain the proper permitting that is needed for liquor sales, restrooms. We've always flagged out the area to make it safe for everyone. And we just want to keep continuing to do these. We've done vendor fairs that help support local businesses, small businesses, and just fun events for the biking community as well.
And Amy, are, are you part of the ownership of the business or manager?
I am the general manager.
You're the general, so you're an employee?
I am, yes.
Okay, and when we granted this five years ago, were you involved working then or how long have you been?
I was working there, I was just not the general manager at the time, five years ago, so.
All right, so promotion at mullets, huh?
Yes.
Okay, so you've carried out events under the existing or the previous conditional use, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, any other questions?
Hi, have you noticed the change in neighborhood parking since the five years that the permit was approved?
The only little bit of change that we've had is with the construction going on around in the area. Typically, we have the parking lot that's just to the east of us, that is owned by the city, but they know that we use that. With the construction going on, they have had that down a few times and/or they have it a little bit smaller than we're used to, but that is the only change of parking that we've had.
Okay, all right. And how long has the operation been under the current ownership, generally speaking?
Seven years now.
Seven years?
Yep.
Okay, okay. You guys still do that Patosi stuff from Wisconsin or not?
We have not done that for a while, no.
I like that, when you did that. Okay, any other questions for Amy? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your lengthy presentation. Okay, so this part of the hearing now, is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's requests? Anybody in support? Okay, we just need your name and address, sir, and you have up to five minutes.
Jim Post, 2240 Livingston. Not here for the neighborhood, just myself. I did go talk to them at their meeting. I guess three things, one is the sound, they don't, will they have to get a sound permit for each, each event that they have? Okay. And then the, the sound looks like it ends at eight, where their events end at 10. I guess I would be, I think, I mean, I would be encouraged to extend that a little bit farther, the sound. Having lived where I've lived, they have, it's not bothered me, I'm four blocks as a crow flies. It's just not been a problem in seven years. You did mention neighborhood parking. I guess, you know, is that something that is tasked to the business? Because you got a lot of Iowa Cubs parking there, you got fishermen, you got single speed. I mean, you know, I guess that, that would be one point, I mean, I don't know how you, last Friday night, it was parked full and they weren't even open, so I don't know if you want to take parking, street parking, you know, present that back to the business as a, as their problem. I don't know, I don't know that I'd want to go there, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Post? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else here to speak in support? Seeing none, anybody to speak in opposition or even neutrality? Okay, all right, so that's it for public comments. Do we have any further questions for staff? Seeing none. Eric, anything you or Chris want to add? It's up to you.
I'll just address the question.
Chair.
I do see that the condition recommended is with an 8:00 PM shut off on outdoor amplified sound, that's something the board can take into consideration. There would be the ability to get a type A sound permit for events that would allow them to go till 11 on weekdays and till 12:30 AM on holidays and weekends, so.
Okay.
The, the sound permit isn't the restricting factor on that recommendation, that would be the staff's recommendation. In terms of the parking question, you know, they, I think it's fair for the board to consider all the pressures that might be present in the parking scenario.
Sure.
And whether this is going to unduly make that more of a problem for the neighborhood, so.
By the same token, Eric, you or staff didn't feel that it would be a problem, is that correct?
Based on the staff recommendation, they would have asked for certain conditions to mitigate anything that they thought was going to be a problem.
Okay.
So, but the board can consider all the testimony that's presented on that concern. So from that standpoint, I mean, they, they have to comply with their site plan in terms of the proper striping and where they allow parking and so forth, so that's still enforceable. To the property, the fact that they may rely on overflow happening on other properties is something that the board should consider probably, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, Eric. All right, I don't think we had anybody in opposition here, but Amy, you've got up to three minutes if you'd like to add anything in closing or any further information you want to add. Are you okay with the staff recommendations? You can just nod your head, the conditions for time and how to operate, okay. All right, then we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Seems to be a fun place down there. And not to tease the applicant or, or the other comments that were made, but I don't think it's up to us to ask to give increased hours for sound and music. If that's what is suggested or proposed or agreed to, well, okay. You know, then everybody can watch the 10 o'clock news and it's all good, yeah. So, any other thoughts or might there be a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, and with your motion and seconds because you feel they've met the requirements and the conditions are appropriate. Okay, so motion by Marlis, second by Rhonda, to grant the next five-year conditional use up to three events, et cetera, with conditions. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries six to zero. All right, so that takes care of that item and we'll move on then to item five, a variance and an exception related to 2110 Guthrie Avenue. And Catherine's going to give us the background on this one.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. As mentioned, this property is located at 2110 Guthrie Avenue. The, you may know this site as the Come and Go Station located off of Guthrie and adjacent to Interstate 235 as it heads north or south. And recently, this was noted by zoning enforcement as having removed their very large oval Come and Go sign. Our understanding is that they did that to effect some maintenance to it, but this removal constitutes an alteration or expansion of their legal non-conforming use for their pole sign. And so by taking it down, they lost their non-conforming use. So they are here today seeking a variance of that provision, that a non-conforming pole sign may not be enlarged or altered in a way which increases the non-conformity as well as a type two zoning exception of 45 feet over the maximum 15 feet of height allowed for a sign located more than 25 feet from a front property line. So just aerial view showing the location of the property. Guthrie Avenue runs along, east-west along the south of the property, so that's considered a frontage line. Interstate 235 runs approximately north-south along the east side of the property and then on the north side of the property, they have Milton Avenue which turns into East 22nd Street. So they effectively have, well, four frontages on this property, so that's the other fun little tidbit to keep in mind as we move through. And then provided by the applicant, this shows their sign. I will skip ahead a little bit to just give you a little bit of history. In 2008, Come and Go did come before the Board of Adjustment and asked for an exception to, at the time, what was allowed in the code was 45 feet of height for structure, in this case, a freestanding pole sign, and they asked for an exception of 16.5 feet over that maximum 45 feet, which allowed them to install the sign at 61 and a half feet in height. And so that's where you see that height of that sign today. And when we updated the code in 2019, this was colloquially using the term grandfathered in, and that's where they are allowed with this non-conformity to have a pole sign that is at such a height. And then as I mentioned earlier, this year, zoning enforcement noticed that the cabinet had been completely removed from the pole sign, it was on the ground, and at that time they issued a notice of violation and that began our proceedings today. So, a couple of site photos, we'll ignore the fact that I took these while driving. And this comes, I.
You're supposed to say you had someone else driving.
Well, somebody else was driving.
There you go.
I said, these did, are looking south coming from the north, so this is the Guthrie Avenue exit from 235, heading south on the off-ramp. And you can see the sign. And then this is from, oh, and unfortunately, I can't remember what the street is now, but this is from across Guthrie Avenue on the residential street there, so that you can just see kind of looking from the south a little bit. So I think, not to drag out this presentation, staff is recommending denial of the requested variance of the provision, I'm going to enlarge that, that prohibits a non-conforming pole sign from being enlarged or altered in a way that increases its non-conformity and as well as the requested type two zoning exception of 45 feet over the maximum 15 feet of height allowed for a sign located more than 25 feet from a front property line. However, we do feel that they would meet the criteria for an amended appeal for a type two zoning exception, which would allow 7.5 feet over the maximum 15 feet of height allowed for a sign located more than 25 feet from a front property line. And we have conditions on that, that would allow for 22.5 feet of height for the sign. The conditions that apply for this is that any freestanding sign shall be a monument sign located outside of any required vision clearance triangle. Any monument sign shall be limited to no more than 22.5 feet in height if located at such. And then of course, our standard condition requiring that a licensed sign contract And then, of course, our standard condition requiring that a licensed sign contractor in it shall do the installation. And I had something of note, but it slipped my mind. I apologize. I'm happy to take questions, though really quickly. Let me flip through. We did receive one card back, but it's under the same property owner and under the same operation management of Come and Go that we received the card back. And then we also received a card from the Neighborhood Association stating, I'll enlarge this, that they have no oppositions unless, as a neighborhood association, unless there were residents closer to the sign that had any oppositions. So, I believe that's all I had for you. And then they did do their neighborhood outreach. So, copy of the letter that they sent out. And then summary of their meeting, they did a Zoom meeting, and they said that they did not have anyone in attendance. So, again, I'd be happy to go back to anything, answer any questions you might have for staff at this time.
Questions for Catherine? Just a brief one, Catherine, I can understand why the, you know, staff would not support a variance request here, but why do you need to give a consolation prize? They're allowed to have a 15-foot tall sign the way it is. Why give them another 7 and 1/2 feet of an exception to have a sign that's 22 and 1/2 foot tall?
I suppose.
And I'm just going to pick on you for a little bit.
That's okay. I suppose that staff was just looking at the situation as it is and trying to be understanding of where they're coming from and the fact that essentially with the code update in the last, like, say they've been operating for, what, 15 years with a 61 and 1/2 foot tall sign? And looking at the situation, we observed that, you know, that it's a bit of a hard blow to be told that you have to chop 40 foot off your sign.
Okay, well, that's fair. I think in your rationale, you say that there's a practical difficulty of providing signage of a size that can adequately identify the fuel station and convenience store, given the scope and configuration of the site. I'm not sure how it would be confusing to the average driver that this is a fuel station and a convenience store, even with a 15-foot sign. We've got two huge canopies, bump islands, galore. I'm there all the time, so I'm not picking on the location. But, well, we'll see about that, yeah. Yeah, so, okay, but you're willing to support an exception level to allow a sign that's no more than 22 and 1/2 foot tall?
Correct. And I think this is something that also notice that staff does try to look at each individual case, but we do also try to look at cases and apply equally to all applicants, the code and possible exception levels.
Thanks for letting me banter at you a little bit there. Okay, all right, so that's staff presentation. Anything else, Justin?
Catherine, real quick, I think in your report, you mentioned that there is numerous locations where they could put this monument sign. Is that right?
They just would have to be, to maintain that exception level, should the board grant it, they would have to be 25 feet from a front property line as they have all, essentially, all four sides of their property are front property lines. It would just need to be 25 feet from a property line. And we did measure ahead of time, and the current location of the signage and the poles that are there would meet this requirement. So if they wanted to place the new sign in the same location, they would meet that 25-foot requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Otherwise, if it's closer to the right of way, what, is it within five feet?
If it's within, I believe, eight feet.
Then it can only be?
Or 12 feet, they can go to eight feet. I might be getting the numbers mixed up.
That's what I'm getting at. If it's closer than 25 feet, then it can only be eight foot tall. Okay. All right, but if it's 25 feet or more, it can be up to 15. Okay?
Correct.
And you're, again, willing to grant an exception of up to 22 and 1/2?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Catherine. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? We just need your name, address is appropriate. You've got up to 10 minutes.
My name is Sarah Austin, and I'm with Nagel Signs at 1020 Wilbur Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa. We're the sign company.
Cheer, got you.
I feel like there's maybe some miscommunication or misunderstanding of what we were trying to do. That sign was put up 15 years ago, and this is the face of the sign. So as you can see, like, it has a hole in it, and it had substantial weathering to it. So in an effort to make sure that it maintained the brand standards that Come and Go once, the sign needed to be updated. And by updated, I just mean a new face. It was going to say the same thing. We also were removing the price sign from the pole. So that, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, that price sign would no longer be there. That price sign is old and antiquated and provided more service problems than probably actual advertising of fuel. And probably more problems for them because it never had the right prices anyways. So we were removing that and updating the sign. For safety, we had brought the sign cabinet to the ground so that our staff could change out the sign cabinet, not 61 and 1/2 feet in the air. And that is what we were doing. I understand that the city is going, is suggesting that we go to 22 and 1/2 feet. The current sign, the first joint of those poles, is at about 22 feet. You cannot see it from the interstate, which is what the sign was trying to do, drive traffic from the interstate to the station. In spring and summer and early fall, you cannot see the fuel canopies from 235 because of the leaves. So the trees would have to go if there is not going to be a tall sign. I guess it is our request that we be able to update the existing cabinet with a new face so that it looks nice and put it back up on top of the pole sign and remove, currently, the price signs are still up there because we were told to cease work, and remove those price signs.
So you generally want to keep the pole the height that it currently is?
I feel like.
At the 61 and 1/2 relative feet?
Yes.
That it is?
Yes, for the visibility, yes.
I've got you. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Any questions for Sarah? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Good afternoon. I had a couple of photos as well, so how would I?
Yeah, you kind of lay them over to your right there toward the end of the table under that kind of overhead projector-looking thing. Yep, you just whip that out of the way. There we go. Yeah, I'll get that one right here. And when you're ready to speak, we'll just need your name and address, and you've got up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Alana Sodders. My address is 2223 East 21st Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50317. I'm the house on the corner, and I have resided in this house since 2002. So my concern with this sign is the light pollution. And it has caused a loss of enjoyment in my property. And this also includes the backyard because of the light being so tall. Even with the tree line that is on my side-lap property and privacy fence, it still shines through and I can still see it. This still seats through my windows despite what I do, you know, to try to cover them. So it does affect my sleep at night. And as you had mentioned, kind of questioned why the need for such a tall sign if this is just a convenience store. And in this image, this store has been operating as a truck stop, and they're not zoned for that. And so there is a line of semi-trucks that, you know, let off exhaust noise. It rumbles the ground all night. So that sign, I believe, is drawing these trucks because they believe that it's a truck stop. Since the sign has been down, it has decreased the light pollution toward my property. And it has been drastically improved my enjoyment of property. And the written sign above here may not have been reviewed yet. It was mailed in on the 18th. But I did oppose the request. And I'm just thinking if there's anything else here. Yeah, so those are my concerns, is it's drawing in additional traffic that believes that it's a truck stop, and they're not operating as a convenience store, and the light pollution that is affecting me.
Okay. Alana, I appreciate you taking time out of your afternoon to come down here and spend some time with us.
Yes.
It's always good to see neighborhood residents here with their interest or concerns.
And I'm sorry, could I?
Yeah.
Throw this up here real quick?
Sure.
I'm not sure how well they can see. That is the sign that is down currently. So that's just another piece of media.
Okay. All right, any questions for Alana? Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, anybody else to speak in opposition? Anybody speaking neutrality? Seeing none. Any comments from our zoning enforcement officers?
I don't have the original pictures. Yes.
And deputy directors?
Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services, Eric Lundy. I did want to clarify, this would not be considered a truck and transportation terminal if they had other things like maintenance and scale and other services that would be for over-the-road trucks, or they had storage yards for trucks. It certainly is a fueling station that's, that markets to, you know, over-the-road trucks. And there's accommodations with canopy size and fueling. So it is kind of an enforcement challenge sometimes because what does happen is there is overnight use by truckers, you know, that will sleep in their trucks and so forth. It's a hard thing to enforce, but there may be some amount of that going on here. It's just difficult to enforce that everywhere around the city, in the Walmart parking lot, for example.
And Eric, is that something depending on, I don't want to pick on Kraus General or Come and Go here, but, you know, if they're aware of that ordinance, couldn't they post signs saying no overnight parking or no?
Yeah, they could. They could, yeah. The other thing is they're in continuous use, so if.
Right.
I don't think that we have the ability to impose our current standards for some of that respect as well.
Right.
The other thing I wanted to come up here to sort of go over was the dynamic of what's occurred here. The area to the south is a residentially developed area.
Right.
When Plan DSM was adopted, that was designated as industrial for future development.
Right.
There was a zoning change that came back and reevaluated that. So there's been some kind of back and forth with how that was treated to the south from a zoning perspective and what protections would be brought about given the adjoining zoning districts. So the way that Come and Go is arranged site-wise would maybe not be the same. Now, from the signage perspective, certainly back at the time they developed, they got relief based on a determination that there was a practical difficulty in the view of the sign from an interstate traffic, and that was important to their business model. But at that time, pole signs were permitted.
Right.
Now, they would have been able to do a panel change without removing the cabinet from the pole and would have been able to get permits to do that. I know they mentioned the safety concern. That's something the board will have to take into account in the situation. But the way the code reads, it's for any reason whatsoever, essentially, so. We've had other examples of their competitors that have had the same problem and come in front of you. I just wanted to point that out, too.
And Eric, while you're here, for clarification, our zoning ordinance doesn't give any, I guess, credit, if you will, for signage allowances to be different if you're near an interstate or near a highway?
No, the old code did give bonuses and things.
Right.
Based on proximity to the property lines and.
Right.
The street corridor, but not.
And since you're a trivia guy, in a very good way here. A lot of these pole signs that sometimes go back 25, 30, 40 years, Des Moines' original zoning code that addressed signage was first created when?
Most of it probably prior to 1965.
Yeah, so in the early days of interstates. And so, you know, you just kind of think of the Mad Magazine, that, you know, make your sign as big as you can. But our current code does not give any credit for you need to be visible from I-235 or anything like that.
No, no.
Okay.
I mean, that's not a specific criterion.
Okay, all right. Great. Any other questions for Eric? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant, since the zoning officer did speak, you're welcome to have any follow-up or closing remarks if you'd like. I can give you up to three minutes for that. And also, since I think you drove down here today from Waterloo, we'll give you some credit there.
Sarah Austin, Nagel Signs, 1020 Wilbur Avenue, Waterloo, addressing the truck stop situation, which isn't part of the sign at all, but I would believe that removing the price sign could eliminate some of that truck traffic because they're not going to know how much the gasoline is. And then in regards to the things being said for the visibility, I think we can all agree that a business needs customers. And telling people on 235 that you can stop there and get your Snickers and your gasoline is vital. And you have to be able to make that decision in a safe manner at a safe distance. And the proposed sign height that they are suggesting, you're not able to see that sign from those distances. So you're basically eliminating the traffic on 235. Thank you.
And Sarah, while you're here, I do not intend to put you on the spot for this because you may not know this because I can't remember. But I know Iowa DOT allows certain fueling stations within certain distances to have signage, you know, like services ahead.
Oh, like the.
And I don't know if that's just in rural areas or what have you, but, you know, you'll see, there's Arby's, Cracker Barrel, Come and Go, I'll see it. So the motoring public does know. To the best of your knowledge, is there any sign like that in either one direction or the other that says Come and Go ahead?
It's a ramp, so I would assume that there are those trailblazers. We don't.
Yeah, trailblazers or what, yeah, is that what you call them?
Yeah, we don't do those for Come and Go.
Right, no, I realize that's a DOT thing.
Well, a sign manufacturer makes them, and then the DOT installs them.
Right.
We do not do that for Come and Go. I do not know.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you. You almost can't see.
I was going to ask that same question.
Yeah.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
You cannot see the trailblazers as well at night. Yes, they are made of reflective.
Oh, sure, sure.
But you are not able to see them.
Yeah, trailblazers, okay. I learned a new one, yeah. Okay, we'll close the public portion then to go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts? Heather Ann?
My initial thought is, you know, back when we needed bigger poles, signage, whatnot to be seen from the highway, it's kind of a modern trade-off with apps and maps on your phone to tell you where gasoline stations might be. So that would be, I suppose, my argument, agreeing with staff for denial.
So signage is just part of people's wayfinding. It's not the only way you know something exists, right? Yeah, yeah. And again, I, you know, there's been a few issues over the years and decades here that have been very important for us to consider here. And the proliferation of pole signs in Des Moines, Southeast 14th, Merle Hay Road, time and time again, citizens have come to us and said, we need to control this. The suburbs don't put up with this. They just don't. And Des Moines was the first city to have a freeway slammed through it in the early '60s. I get that. But modern zoning and modern sign ordinances are designed to take into account community character as much as they are to say, hey, here's advertising for me. Sarah's got a great sales pitch for her client. That's what she's here to do. But if we think we need to allow them to keep their 60-foot pole for their gas station, well, I think. pole for their gas station, well, I think we need to allow one for the Denny's and the Quick Trip and the McDonald's and anybody else who's near an interstate exit. And we don't have that. I think frankly, this is one of the few tall pole signs left in our city. There used to be one at Northeast 14th and Euclid by East Gate for Hardee's. It's 50 foot in the air. And they said it so you could see it from the interstate. Boy, I thought that was a good one since it was a mile and a half away. But our ordinance didn't catch up with our commercialism and something that was mentioned earlier, car culture, was mentioned in one of our earlier items. You know, the tall signs go back to car culture. And yes, we still need automobiles. But I think in looking at the zoning ordinance, the character of everything and including the comments which were given, whether it's light pollution or not, there's also something called sign pollution. A lot of big signs, a lot of visual impact. That's what the ordinance is trying to get away from. So those are my only comments, but if anybody's got a motion one way or the other, feel free to put something on the table here.
Chair, I would just echo kind of what you said. I mean, you know, the city and the city council made it very clear that they did not want to have pole signs. And it's an unfortunate set of circumstances here. We have a, you know, where they essentially lost their non-conforming status. And so since they lost that, they would have to meet the variance test. And the variance test is very, very difficult to meet. And unfortunately, they have not met the variance test today. And so I will be voting to deny their request today.
Okay. And just for some clarification, so there's a, there are two appeals here. There's the variance request, which is number one, but then again, staff has proposed an exception as kind of a consolation, if you will. So there are two appeals. So we can do two votes here. So we could do, do we want to consider the variance? Does anybody want to put a motion on the table to either support the variance or deny it? Gary, do you want to add anything?
Chair, I think we were discussing, well, when Mr. Gross made a motion, I think the motion was to deny, but I think maybe we could get clarification on whether that was deny the variance or the type 2 zoning exception.
I was just saying that I would not be in favor of...
Of variance.
Of variance. And so I would be in favor of denying the variance.
Do you want to lead us off with that? Because that's kind of the one half of the equation here.
Okay. We can start there with, I will put forth a motion to deny the request for a variance.
Okay. All right. So we got a motion of denial of the request for variance. All those in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries 6-0. Okay. Now, we, there is a secondary appeal here, an exception of 40 feet or the maximum 15 feet of height allowed for a sign more than 25 feet from a property line. Does anybody want to look at the exception level and look at what staff has proposed?
I would make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation of the amended appeal. So goes from, it goes to the 22.5 high.
As long as it's 25 feet or more setback, right? Okay. Would there be a second on that motion from anyone? All right. Second on for Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Say aye. One, two, three, four. Those opposed? Two. Okay. But that motion carries. So takes four to grant any appeal. So Sarah, unfortunately, those legs got to come down in height or have to be reconstructed, but you can have a sign up to 22 and a half feet there with proper permitting based on our decision. So we'll have a decision and order out next week for everybody to review on that. Okay. So that concludes item number five. That'll bring us to item number six. Three parts to this one. Request for conditional use, a variance, and a zoning exception at
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Item six is located at 2525 Grand Avenue. And the proposal is use of the building for a hotel with accessory sales of alcoholic liquor, wine, and/or beer for on-premises consumption, which would be permitted throughout the building, and use of a 712 square foot area and 120 square foot patio for a bar use, in addition to alteration and expansion of an existing freestanding pole sign along Grand Avenue with a maximum height of 13.5 feet. So the sign would contain a 5.83 foot wide by 8.08 foot tall, internally illuminated main cabinet and manual reader board. And so I'm going to pull up a couple of slides And this is the property that is in question. And so what you'll see here is the property is zoned MX3, and it includes the gatehouse, the house that's, or the building that's to be used as a bar, along with the hotel. And then there's another building on the premises, which is a restaurant. And that area is zoned RX2 and is not part of the consideration for the conditional use. And so here is the gatehouse that is located on the premises, as mentioned. Here's another view of the building located here. And this is actually facing what would be northeast from Grand Avenue. And here is another view set further back, closer to the sidewalk. So as you can see, the restaurant being here, the building set back a little bit, the bar is set back even further. And here is a front view of the property from Grand Avenue. You'll see that there's parking. I believe that's intended for this restaurant use. And then beyond that is the And here is a further aerial that I thought was important to kind of explain the context of the property. As you'll see, this is Grand Avenue along the south. This would be Ingersoll Avenue to the west. The reason I note that is because on our next item, we will be talking about after this one, there is some overlap associated with those. And I'll get to that in a moment. But as you can see, there's a drive that extends down the bar here, the hotel, the restaurant. And so the bar is intended for the purpose of serving the hotel patrons as well as the conditional use for, within the hotel itself would be to allow for alcohol service to be provided to the hotel rooms and for the pool areas and other areas within the actual hotel. But it is intended for those folks who would be staying at the hotel. So here is an old photo of, this is an old Howard Johnson photo of the building. And so what you'll see is, originally this building was combined with a parcel that is to the north. They're no longer combined, but I wanted to show this for historical purposes of the old Howard Johnson Hotel. It's the applicant's intention to renovate the hotel for a 81-room mid-century modern boutique hotel called Mallow. And so the hotel is intending to have 45 parking stalls, and I'm going to back up just so we can see some context here. They're intending to have 45 parking stalls on the premises to serve the hotel. And the bar, they are also reconstructing a portion of this retaining wall, and there is some overlap in ownership to where overflow parking would be provided on the parcel to the west, which is Office Max, Taco John's. I'm not sure if there's a Dollar General or something similar within that building as well. So there's overlap in terms of parking. And here is the hotel. I'm showing this as, you know, it kind of shows the first floor where that alcohol service would be for the bar. If you can see my cursor, I'm not sure if you can, squirreling around. And then there's a patio. And then the serving area for inside the hotel is also going to be the bar area here, pool area, some common areas where the service would take place, as well as some of that delivery to the rooms as well when room service is ordered. And here is the, and so to be clear on what was being asked there, there was two conditional uses. Conditional use for the, for the other use, that's accessory alcohol, beer, wine sales for on-premises consumption for the hotel. And then there's the conditional use for the bar. There's also a request for a variance of the existing pole sign, which I have pulled up an image that's in front of you today. And so this is the original, or this is the original frame of the pole sign that was there. And so it's, they're requiring a variance of the provision that prohibits a non-conforming pole sign from being enlarged, altered, or altered in a way that increases its non-conformity. And then there's a second appeal for that sign. It's a type 2 zoning exception of 5.5 feet over the maximum eight feet within the front yard. And so this is the sign that they're proposing. And so it has that mid-century modern feel to it. As you can see, up here's the cabinet, illuminated cabinet, and then the illuminated reader board. Here is a view of the premises as it would face, of the sign and the premises as it would face northeast. And that's a picture of the sky. But this is a picture of the sign as it would face to the west. And then just backed out a little bit to show some context of that area. As you can see, there's entrance here. There's also an entrance over here. And this one, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. So earlier I mentioned that the next item is related. As you'll see this drawing, it is going to be seen in both presentations as there's a pole sign that, existing pole sign here, which we're talking about. So I'm going to focus on that for the moment. And so the pole sign that they have proposed is located along Grand Avenue, and it's just outside of the vision clearance triangle on their property. It's here. And so with every, with every appeal, we have a certain criteria that we have to look at. And for a conditional use, we have a total of five criteria for all projects that are seeking sales of alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer. Staff believes that they've satisfied those criteria. Additionally, there are an additional nine criteria that's applicable. They're general standards that are use specific regulations. Staff too believes that the applicant has satisfied those criteria and it's in accordance with the intended spirit of the zoning ordinance. As we talked about earlier, we talked about parking. The applicant has worked out solutions for some concerns that could be raised, as well as they've addressed other concerns. Now, there are some criteria as related to the variance. And so the variance requires what we consider a hardship test. And so it's demonstrating that, you know, the variance needed needs to demonstrate that they, that without it, that they cannot achieve a reasonable return on the property, as well as they need to demonstrate that the plight of the owner is not due to circumstances of their own making, and that the variance, if approved, wouldn't alter the essential character of the area. Staff does not believe that the applicant has demonstrated the test that they wouldn't be able to yield a reasonable return associated with, if they didn't have the sign, as well as the circumstances of the owner's own making. Now, as we consider the sign, we also have to consider the height of the sign, which itself requires a type 2 zoning exception. And staff does believe that there is merit to requesting an exception that would allow the height of that sign to exceed the eight-foot maximum height limit within the 25-foot front yard. The applicant has proposed 13.5 feet, and staff is comfortable with a 12-foot height. I'll scroll down here. So staff has recommended approval of the requested conditional use for the hotel and for the bar, as well as denial of the requested variance that prohibits a non-conforming pole sign. And then the staff recommends approval of the type 2 zoning exception to allow a monument sign that would be over eight feet in tall. So we've looked at that sign and we said, okay, monument signs per our code are standard and is within reason to accept for the property. And so we would look for them to have the monument sign located out of any vision clearance triangle, and we would look for it to be limited to no more than 12 feet in height, if located within 25 feet of a front lot line. Additionally, any signage would need to be installed by licensed sign contractor with this, which is typical. I would like to note that as the applicant develops the property, they would be required to pull all of the necessary permits and develop the site in accordance with building code and site plan ordinance as well. The conditional use would be subject to if the zoning enforcement officer found that they were not satisfying the conditions as approved, that they could bring it back for reconsideration of that conditional use. Here is a consent map that shows the neighbors that submitted comment cards in support of I'll just scroll through those quickly. I'll just scroll through those quickly. And here is a copy of the applicant's neighborhood meeting request. And then, here is, here's the responses to that request. Three, three folks had intended the meeting, and there were questions. Some of the applicants were concerned about the proposal for another bar. However, the, the hotel that is being operated is, the, the applicant had indicated that they're, they're not looking for any adverse activity to impact the overall hotel operations. So, they plan to operate that in a manner that would be consistent with any conditions of approval. And then, there are some questions about vision clearance, which are going to be a little more specific to the next item that they are jointly submitting. Well, not, not, it's a separate item, next on the agenda.
Right.
The attendees. Then, we received some correspondence from other property owners that, that came in as well. And I did not scroll down because I did not see that one. What questions do you have for staff? Justin?
Frank, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So, the pole sign that currently exists, it still has nonconforming status, is that right? They have not lost that nonconforming status for that pole sign? Okay.
Just remind him later, Justin.
Fair enough.
Anything else for Frank? Okay, all right, good presentation, Frank, thank you. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant. Just need your name, sir, and appropriate address, you've got up to 10 minutes.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jake Christensen, 2300 Terrace Road. For those of you who are not familiar, that's two blocks from, from the subject site. So, I have a distinct interest in the quality of what happens here, and that's part of what I want to talk about today. So, let me get this to work. This is new, since I was here last. Oh, it's up. Sweet, okay. So, one of the things I want to convey is that, and Frank started to touch on this, this is part of a much larger context. So, we, my daughter got a little aggressive in her red shading, so we do not own the Taco John's, but everything else is part of what we are working on. It also doesn't include the Jimmy John's to the west, in which we are working on putting a French pastry chef. So, the context of this is important, not only for the cross-parking that Frank alluded to, but you can see it really well in the image that Frank had up before with the power lines and the multiple signs and the just visual clutter that is there. Some of the things I want to convey, in my 20-year career, I have never asked for a pole sign. This is a historic renovation of a former Howard Johnson's, and I'm going to show you a number of images that convey the iconic nature of Howard Johnson's and its recognized stature in our, in our country for being one of the first motor lodges. And so, sorry to correct you, Frank, but it's not Mallow, it's Molo, which we couldn't use Hojo or anything remotely related to the name Howard Johnson's, which would have been a lot more fun. So, motor lodge was the best approach that we could come up with, shortened to Molo. And so, that's the premise behind the project. What you see shaded in red, albeit incorrect, is a, is a $30 million investment. 22 million will go into the hotel. Another 10 will go into the adjacent Office Max and Dollar General. Chad Rothson, who's with me and part of our group, has worked diligently on this to make the leases co-terminus, and we will be doing a full renovation of that when those leases are up and improving the tenancy. Nothing wrong with the existing ones, but Ingersoll used to be one of the primary trade districts, and I think the day for, for that is coming back. Frank started to convey some of the imagery. We fully intend and are going through the National Park Service and the State Historic Preservation Office to do a full historic renovation of the project. And one of the components of that, and I'll start to show you some images relative to it, but because it was a motor lodge, because Ingersoll was such a major vehicular corridor, and remains a strong vehicular corridor, but thankfully now has incorporated the components of walkability and bicycle traffic that we fully support. The reason I'm here for the sign request is not because I think somebody needs to see us from a mile away. It truly goes to what the historic nature of the building is and why this particular approach that Howard Johnson's took during his creation of the brand was important. This is a shot of the former gatehouse and how we intend to restore that orange tile roof and the interior spaces that were unique to Howard Johnson's. I wish we could bring the restaurant back. Starbucks got that. We also intend in the future to, the medical office building that sits on Grand is part of the project, not with, in front of you today, but just for context, that will become a neighborhood restaurant. And you see a little patio on the, on the eastern side of that building. The doctor who developed that building also developed the hotel and the Howard Johnson's, so it was all part of the mid-century move in 1962. That's just an aerial shot, but. One of the things, the visual clutter, the retaining wall Frank touched on, we are going to replace the entire retaining wall along our property, as well as all of landscaping, fencing, and bury all of the overhead power lines that are currently coming into the site. I think that might not seem like a big deal, but there was like a spider web of power lines that were coming into the building, and between the retaining wall being ugly, and power lines, and the fence, we are going to remove almost all of the visual clutter that currently exists on the site. And COVID obviously was an impact, we've been working on this a long time, but we're finally ready to move forward. This is a mood board to give you a little feel for what, what the designers are thinking about when they're talking about the hotel. I stayed at the former Howard Johnson's in Old Scottsdale 17 years ago. It's called The Valley Hill, and vowed if I ever got a shot at an old Howard Johnson's, I was going to try and do something as cool as what they did, and we're doing our best to do that. This was the sign that we originally drew, not asking for the sign. I mentioned I live in the neighborhood, it's really important that people can navigate safely. And even some of our street trees in certain, in certain portions of Grand make it difficult to come and go and from location, so we modified that to this size sign and pole, and base with staff's recommendation of approval of a monument sign at 12 feet. This is not a monument sign, but it's 13 and some change. I wouldn't have any problem shortening this to the 12-feet height that the city staff has suggested for a monument. Being a neighbor to this property, a monument sign, in my opinion, it has a wider base and sits on a pedestal, and certainly is important in certain circumstances. But I think it, in this case, this is actually a better application from Frank's comment about view triangle. And I have a copy of this for the record. The images that I'm about to show you are from the book History of the Howard Johnson's and How a Massachusetts Soda Fountain Became an American Icon. And what I want to convey with these images is just how important signage was. I like this, this sentence here, it says Howard Johnson's Motor Lodge makes an overnight stop of vacation. It's actually one of the main goals of our project, is to, is to become a staycation location for citizens of the metro. Here's another one, host of the highways.
Cool.
This is actually, I found this on eBay, and so, there's a photocopy for the record, but.
Is that a matchbook?
No, this is actually the drink menu.
Oh, that's the drink menu, okay.
But here are the signs. Every one of the Howard Johnson's has a huge sign that is a component of the brand. And in our historic application, we have a 70-page dissertation on the historic nature of our building, how it fit into the context of that with our other Howard Johnson's. And the signage is a huge part of the history and the reason behind the building. So, in my 20-year career, I mentioned I never asked for, for a pole sign. I don't intend to again. I've actually removed five of them, and I've removed three billboards. Signage has its time and place, and I, I'm here to ask for consideration for this one having its place. Any questions?
Questions for Jake? Yeah, go ahead, Heather Ann.
Hi, I really like this project.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments and questions. I'm very familiar with Grand Avenue. For the past six years, I've taken and picked up my children from school over there. There was an accident where you're developing?
Yes, there was a, unfortunately, before we acquired the Office Max and Dollar General, a gentleman, I don't know what happened, but he drove off and went through the fence and over the retaining wall.
And you would be taking down both of those existing pole signs then with the redevelopment? The Office Max, Dollar General, and the Terrace Apartments, is that right?
What we're proposing to do in this is to replace the two existing signs for Terrace Hill Apartments and replace them with the signage that we have presented today.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah. And maybe down the line, you might take those other signs down, but those properties aren't for our consideration today.
Correct.
But I understand.
I don't have any desire to keep those signs.
Yep.
But I will tell you that we are chasing national high-quality tenants, and I, since it's not on the agenda, I don't, I promise that. But if I had my way, I won't have the sign there. But I can't, I can't promise that today. I also want to be clear, Frank touched on it, the next item is the exact same conversation.
For a different sign on the other property.
On Ingersoll.
Yeah.
And so, I want to make sure that the board is thinking about that in its entirety.
Right.
I think this is, I served on this board for four years, so I have some familiarity with what you're dealing with. One of the things I'd like to put in place, and it's a little out of order, is the Ingersoll sign is more important to me than the Grand Avenue sign.
So, in item six, the signage we're talking about is on the Ingersoll side?
This item is Grand.
It's Grand.
Next item.
The next item is the Ingersoll one, okay. And which one's more important to you?
The next one.
The next one, okay. Yeah, so related to this one, so the existing Grand Avenue sign just kind of has this, I don't know what you want to call it, this scalloped, looks like kind of a salad fork-shaped pole, right?
Right.
And you would take that down, but you want to replace it with kind of a narrow, flat shaft with your general design, but you say you would keep that around 12-foot?
Yeah, I don't have any problem going to 12-feet. I wish, Frank, how do I get this image?
Yeah, get it back up.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so then, this one would go away, but, but you'd want to put up your design on a slim, flat-sided pole.
As well as remove the power pole that's there, so that's all part of the power pole bearing.
Right. Staff is not supportive of that, correct? But if you had an alternative design to meet the city requirements, you could have that base within, what, three foot of the sidewalk or maybe less?
I think, if I'm reading the staff recs correctly, they would, they're suggesting a 12-foot monument sign, which, which by its nature is wider.
Right, and it could be set pretty close to the sidewalk.
Similar location.
That's the only rub I've had for years. I like monument signs, but sometimes they're hard to see around, depending on how they're set and where the accesses are. But your primary access to get out is still going to be where that driveway is now. You're going to redo the retaining wall and stuff, right?
Yeah.
But is the drive still going to be kind of there?
This property is tough.
Yeah.
We, we have a Grand Avenue address, but we're actually more visible from Ingersoll.
Right.
And we fully expect that no one is going to find our hotel because of the sign. It's not why I'm standing in front of you.
I got you.
There are people who reserve room on their phone. It's, it's part of the overall history and the point behind a motor lodge. And just to say it more plainly, I would give up my request for the sign on Grand in exchange for the Ingersoll sign. Because I don't need two signs to say what I'm saying.
Right. Yep. You're, you're a good deal maker. Now, I try to make the deals item to item, so that we're.
I wish they were all on the same item, that's why I'm bringing it up, because they are related, and I believe it's fair for all of you to consider.
Separate parcels, so they're separate items, is that right? Yeah. Okay, well, so Jake, that's your presentation, right?
That's it.
Questions, Heather Ann?
Just another clarification, separate items, but it will be sort of a, a block-wide property? Is that right? The restaurant, the bar, the motor lodge?
Yeah, we go from Grand to Ingersoll.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's a way, yeah, maybe staff can bring that back up again. So, if we kind of follow Frank's cursor there, yeah, there's that common drive-through that connects this property. Okay. All right, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Come on up, you've got up to five minutes, we just need your name and address.
Hello, my name is Lauren Koloff. I'm the executive director of the Avenues of Ingersoll and Grand, and our office address is 558 28th Street. If you're not familiar, the Avenues of Ingersoll and Grand is a nonprofit organization that promotes this area, that provides enhanced maintenance. Everybody come to Ingersoll Live on Saturday, that's my plug. Okay, but I'm here today to chat about item six and seven. As Jake said, they are related, so the signage and the conditional use for the Hotel Molo property. So, I am here to express support for the project. The current property is obviously an eyesore and contributes negatively to the character of our neighborhood. And this will be the first hotel in the corridor. And we feel really lucky that we're not just getting any old hotel, but a unique and a very special boutique hotel concept that I think will appeal not only to people traveling from out of town, but also people in the community who are looking for a staycation. The full plans for the hotel, including the pool, the bar, the restaurants, it's going to add further amenities for the people who live and work in the neighborhood. It's going to truly be an asset for everyone. I think this hotel will continue to help build the avenue's reputation as not just a corridor, but rather a destination. I know that when I book lodging for my own vacations, I try to stay in places that are very walkable, so that I can experience everything the city has to offer without having to navigate around an unknown city too much in a car. And aesthetics for me are also very important when I book a hotel, so I love that, you know, Jake was showing some of the historic images and what this hotel will look like. So, I think that the Hotel Molo is going to provide the same sort of special opportunity for the avenues. The project's going to bring great foot traffic to the area, since people will obviously have a place to park, and then they can walk to all of the great restaurants and retailers that are within just a few blocks on our beautiful new streetscape. So, the signage that the Hotel Molo is proposing not only matches the aesthetic of the mid-century modern hotel concept, but I think it also adds character to our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is not some sort of cookie cutter suburban area. It's known for its art, its culture, its unique mix of old and new, the history. And I think the current signs that are left over from the apartments are still a lingering eyesore, and they add nothing to the neighborhood, while these signs would actually add something, need to be a vast improvement. So, I read through the staff recommendations, and I understand the concerns about vision clearance. And I think Jake and his team have made it pretty clear that they're willing to work with the city. He lives here, he cares about the community, to make it the best solution for everyone. Kind of echoing his comments, I feel like a 12-foot monument sign would be way more bulky and out of character and would create more of a vision clearance issue than the 12-foot pole sign, which is aesthetically pleasing and fits the character of the project. um, the 12-foot pole sign, which is aesthetically pleasing and fits the character of the project. Um, so I personally believe it would be better just to work with the existing pole signs. Um, so yeah, I was just, I'm closing. Um, I've had several conversations with Jake over the past couple of months about this project, and it's my impression that they do genuinely really care about this community and want to make this hotel and restaurant project a benefit for everyone involved. Thank you.
Questions for Laura? All right. Laura, thanks for coming down today and we appreciate your dedication and advocacy for the Ingersoll corridor. All right, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant's request? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Or neutrality? All right, seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? Eric, yeah, do you want to come up and address, or if Justin wants to throw that at you again?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interject, so.
No, 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 that's good. Justin, do you kind of want to ask, do you kind of want to ask that again?
Yeah, Eric Lundey, Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services.
Yeah, Eric, just about the, the current sign in its current form, isn't it still, and it doesn't still be protected by non-conforming?
It still exists, we have not enforced on it. It's arguably because of the change of use of the premise, which, there's an original hotel, that it was apartments, we're going back to hotel, that actually triggered a site plan as well. That site plan is also a triggering element to removal of the sign. Since we're in that development process right now, we don't enforce until everything's reas, you know, the change of use is established or whatever. So, there's no, there's been no removal of the sign, or we have not enforced for them to remove the sign yet, but that would have been inevitable if they'd left it up as it is. That said, the way this was put on the agenda was for an alteration of the existing sign. So, if they're actually replacing it, the relief is the same, so I don't know if we have to renotice it, or, um, I was going to present that question, because I think in all the discussion leading up to this, my involvement, it was still preserving a portion of the structural element, so if that's not the case, then I didn't know if we had to renotice it, or if we're still good knowing that it's a variance of the, of the provision on the pole sign itself.
Does that help?
Yeah, and I'm sort of asking Gary if there's any issues with moving forward. With, it'd be the same variance, it's just that the description of what's happening is a little different, and so I don't know.
Because you're not keeping the pole sign, you're replacing it with a pole sign.
Yeah.
So, you're saying it, it has lost its non-conforming status?
The, the, the collective activity of changing the use requires a site plan and, and there's language in the code about when pole signs lose their non-conforming status, and one of those is the change of use, you know, site plan element, so.
Okay, so it has.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
The fact, and then it, I don't know if it's been maintained in occupation, has it been occupied still? Yeah, so it's been out of.
For six.
Use as well, so that's another triggering factor. But again, we haven't enforced, because they've been.
Sure.
Actively in the, in the development process, and so, um, and I'll make the same kind of comment on the other site when that comes up, because that's a little bit different.
Yeah. But yeah, okay.
So, I guess I did want to make sure we're good to go to move ahead.
And I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the distinction you're making with, with how it was noticed versus how we're hearing.
So, I think if, as you read it in the, or, in the, um, agenda, doesn't it say alteration of the existing?
Let's.
Yeah, so, so the actual what's happening is a little different.
Alteration and expansion.
In the fact that they're going to remove all of that and put something back.
So, it'd be replacement.
So, then, but the, but the relief that they need is the same either way.
Yeah, I, I think unless the applicant has any concerns with, with his, his own due process, uh, rights here, I think that the, the agenda as noticed, gave adequate notice of generally what was going to be discussed, um, so, uh, unless the applicant has any concerns regarding his own due process, um, I don't think that we need to renotice it and continue it on.
Okay, thank you.
Let's, let's just say it's a significant alteration, because it's going to get taken out and they'd like to replace it with another.
And I, I guess just because this is being recorded and I don't, we, I observed the applicant noting that he's in agreement with, with continuing today, um, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
That's clear for the recording.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Eric, much appreciated. All right, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
You, you will get three minutes here in a sec anyway, so yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so if there's no further questions for staff, yeah, Jake, come on up, you've got three minutes, you can wrap it up, rebuttal, add info.
The only thing I have to, to add is that, um, just for context of why we're vacant.
Yeah.
We, um, we paid $175,000 to relocate every person who lived in that building. That building was a D-minus apartment building when we acquired it, it was not safe. Heat, whatever you want to call them, uh, the stoves were, she was plugged into the wall and there were two burners, the building was terrible. So, we relocated everyone, because I didn't want someone to go homeless, because I, what I thought was a cool idea.
Wow.
So, we had, uh, primary health, relocated every single person, nobody became homeless because of what we're trying to do, and that was, um, at the same time COVID hit. So, within a week of getting everyone relocated, then COVID shut us down.
Mm-hmm.
Over two years. So, we would have stayed occupied, we would have been here, we would have not, I'm very aware of the six-month vacancy rule, I wouldn't have let that trigger if a global pandemic hadn't occurred, so it's factual.
Yep.
There's a number of reasons why we don't have a conforming use, but for context, that's it.
And Jake, while, while you're up here, I do have a question for you, so, um, and I'll come back to this when we get to our own deliberation, but it seems like our, our biggest focus here isn't on your use or even the alcohol, it's about talking about signs. So, you know, we, we've, we've discussed a lot of signs and a lot of pole signs, and it's real difficult to get over that variance test. If there was a, maybe a meet-in-the-middle proposal that you had a monument sign base, just the first two foot of some kind of material that might go to mid-century modern, and usually with your proper base, masonry base, then you've, the sign's supposed to be generally the width, what if we had some combination where you could put your sign on a proper base?
Totally fine.
Where it kind of looks like it's a monument sign, even though it's not fully shouldered out?
I get the value of the monument sign and the, the thought behind the masonry base, and I totally get all that.
Okay.
I'm here to try and figure out a way to.
Just.
Tie the history together.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Not certain how it's done.
Yeah, and that, there's, there's a difference between what I'd like to see and, yeah, I think that's cool, or I get it, versus, you know, the variance test is a difficult one to beat.
Totally recognize.
It just is all the way around. So, I, I always got to kind of wear that on my sleeve, that's a tough one. Um, okay, all right, anything else for Jake? All right, thank you, sir, great presentation. Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation, and I would encourage my colleagues, you know, we basically have four appeals here, so we could break these down into four votes, and even four sub-chapters in discussion, and I'll just kind of lead off. I'm not the oldest one on this board. See? Uh, but I don't remember when.
I even God likes to smile.
But I don't remember when Howard Johnsons actually operated here, it's, to me, is.
I, I do.
But Dom does. But I just think this is an amazing project. I've driven by this thing for 30-some years and I never caught the architecture, especially to what used to probably be, that was probably the main office, the little cupola building, that's where you checked in. This is a fascinating project. This is awesome. This is great for the city, it's great for Ingersoll. Um, the alcohol use, it's incidental, it's not the primary use, it goes with it. Um, we didn't spend much time to even discuss what kind of booze or how, I think the applicant was clear. Um, so, kind of to break this down, the first appeal is a conditional use for an other use, which is a hotel that would sell alcoholic liquor, wine, or beer for on-premise consumption. So, would there be any discussion or any motions on that consideration for that conditional use?
I would move to, um, to recommend the staff recommendation, those are the wrong words, approval requested conditional use for the hotel.
Okay, subject to the relative conditions that would go with that.
On and on.
All right, would there be a second by anyone? Second by Heather Ann? All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 6-0. Um, related to that, there's a conditional use then for a bar, which would be in the littler building there, I think, um, selling alcoholic liquor, wine, or beer for on-premise consumption. Same thing, any discussion, thoughts, or emotion? You want to do it?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the bar.
All right, motion by Heather Ann? Second by Rhonda, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, we've got one opposed, but that motion still carries five to one, so we've got conditional use there for the bar. Okay, so now we've got to break down, so, the variance request, um, you know, there's a non-conforming pole sign to be enlarged or altered in any way, but I think with the discussion we had, the variance request is to actually remove the existing pole sign and replace it with a new, I would call stylized pole sign. So, would there be some discussion on that variance request?
I have a, a comment. I, I understand, you know, we just voted on, on a sign. I wish, I mean, I, I'm learning, but this project seems really unique, very interesting. It's right next to a gallery, an art gallery. There was an accident that happened that was very upsetting to me as I traveled that road daily. Um, I get the, the hesitation, the public hesitation about doing a monument sign, um, for that reason, the visibility and the speed on Grand, but I don't know if that's outside of the scope of our discussion, but that's my comment.
You know, if we can show that there are unique circumstances that are not of the owner's own making, and it wouldn't just be for convenience and cost or something like that, we'd have to show there's some unique circumstances to the land in question, correct? Gary, is that a good enough summary?
That's definitely one of the criteria.
Okay, yeah. Um, so if you wanted to look at a motion to grant a variance, then would that be to allow him to have the sign the way he's designed it? And again, I'm just trying to get us all kind of thinking here, I know this is the tougher part.
I would appreciate the reasons based on the historical aspect, the artistic aspect, and the safety aspect, making it a unique part of a unique neighborhood and keeping consistent with the traffic and the safety in that particular area. I know I've tried pulling out onto Grand from that parking lot, and it is not for the faint of heart.
Right.
And I don't think a monument sign would help that access point myself.
Okay.
Um, and I feel like I'm a pretty strong driver after the places I've lived, but, you know, that could be neither here nor there. I, I do see why, uh, the request could be approved.
Just go ahead and make that clarification.
I, I was just chatting with the chair about, about the comments, and to kind of clarify my last answer about, you know, the variance test, but the comments that I'm hearing, um, when you're talking about the vision, the vision clearance and things like that, it doesn't strictly fall under the variance test, but under 6.6.2 of chapter 134, the board can determine that there's not a feasible location for the placement of a monument sign that's outside of the vision clearance, um, and so that could allow an exception for a pole sign to be placed.
Mm-hmm. Justin? So, this for legal then, so you're saying it's outside the context of the variance test?
Yes, I think that's right.
I don't know that staff gave any merit about vision clearance or an issue unless we just with our common sense are like, hey, it's kind of tough, it's tough to see there the way it is, and an additional big slab-sided sign could cause some problems there. I could see that as an issue.
I would have to say, though, I drive down that way.
Right.
I don't know that often, but I guess I don't know if I have an opinion about.
Sure, and that's cool. And Eric, although we're closed for any other things besides the board, you must have something important to share.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I think if there's any inkling of wanting to pursue that other exception provision that Gary pointed towards.
Right.
That we should have the chance to evaluate that and determine.
Separately.
A recommendation, so that might.
Okay.
Still be an option available for them, but, because, because I could certainly say a monument sign could not also go in that location.
Right.
So.
Could we?
That's definitely a, an element to that, so to make the argument that the pole sign is needed, because the monument sign would be a traffic issue, is, is moot to me, because we wouldn't let you have the monument sign there either, that would have.
That's kind of what I'm getting at, that I don't know that we said there was a problem with any vision.
Yeah, and we didn't provide that analysis, and, and I think we would need the opportunity to make that analysis.
Okay. Um, if we chose to say we'd like to continue that portion, we could evaluate that later. If they needed minor amendments to an application, would we need to renotice or anything? Could we just consider it a part of their?
If, if we had to add to the appeals or something, we could renotice it.
Okay, and it wouldn't be the detriment of the applicant, they wouldn't have to like pay a new fee or anything?
No, we would just amend the.
I mean, 90% of this is the use and the alcohol, and I'd like to, you know, we've obviously gotten through that.
Yeah, yeah, if they're willing to kick that to the next hearing, we could take a look at what things we might have to change, or, and then we could also repair the question about.
Okay.
About the new.
Yeah, I'm glad to have Justin and Heather Ann's thoughts on that, Gary's help, your comments.
And, and these are all valid input, and I'm, I'm glad that these things are coming out in the discussion, because, um.
Yeah.
Because of the way it was requested, we didn't.
Sure.
Necessarily analyze all those things, so.
Okay, so you'd be willing to work with the applicant on what they might, not necessarily suggest anything, but any kind of an amendment, amended proposal in regard to the sign here on item six?
Correct, and this might be a repeat exercise on the next item, but we'll see.
Well, yeah, we'll have to see on that. All right.
Yes, I'm, I'm open to that, and I think that would be.
Thank you.
The fair way for the.
Yeah.
For the analysis to occur.
Thank you. All right, so Jake, I'm going to have you come back up for the record here. So, we're, um, I'm not necessarily saying we're stuck between a rock and a hard place here, but, but to make this very clear on what the needs are, what the concerns are, our kind of purview here on this item, if you kind of went back to the drawing board a bit and sat down with staff, I would be happy if you wanted to continue this to next month, to discuss the, either the replacement, the non-conforming pole sign, and, and what your amended approach is.
Just to be clear, with the votes that have already taken place, would that portion of, of this item be approved, and what we'd be talking about doing is continuing the balance then, specific to the sign?
Yeah, just specific to the sign, right?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because, because, because we voted to allow you to have the hotel use with the alcohol, and then the separate bar use with the alcohol, correct?
Yeah, and, and I think really these, I mean, there's, there's really four votes here, they could have been treated as separate items, I think it's fair.
Regardless.
To say that those two have already.
Yeah.
Gone through and been passed.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we, we can.
Need to bring those back.
Undo those and bring those back, really.
No, no, so next month, if we continue this, it would just be about what you are proposing for a sign. You, you could certainly say, nope, I'm just going to do the monument sign the way I'm supposed to, and you don't have to come back.
Okay.
But for clarification, maybe to sit down with staff and talk about some things, I think there were, there were everything from concerns, hints, and suggestions from the board on both sides, maybe what you could propose, maybe what staff should look at a little closer.
That makes sense to me, and I actually agree with zoning enforcement and Eric on we should continue the next item and bring both.
Because the next item is just about signage.
Yep.
Right, that's a good point. Well then, let's go ahead, since you stated that, then, we'll go ahead and address number six, and then I think we can address seven with the continuance too.
Okay.
So, all right, so based on the board's deliberation, some of our questions, discussion with us and staff and the applicant, applicant's requested to continue the secondary portions of item six, the variance request, and then a zoning exception related to a non-conforming pole sign to the next hearing. So would there be a motion to grant that continuance for those two related things?
So moved.
All right.
Checking.
All right. Sorry, Tom, since these two are having fun with it anyway, Justin and Heather Ann, so motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Tom, all right, six. All right, 6-0 to continue item six. Now, since item seven is very similar and somewhat related, and the applicants expressed the same considerations and concerns, and would like to continue this to the next regularly scheduled meeting, would there be a motion to allow for that? Tom, do you want to do that this time?
No.
No, okay.
Because I didn't hear what you said.
All right, motion by anyone, Marlis?
I'll second.
Second by Rhonda, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, it's not like we're trying to get out of here early or anything on you, Jake, but, but yeah, I think it might be good for everybody to sit down, just go back to the drawing board, and maybe there's a meet in the middle here. All right, but you have a super project here, this is awesome, so, thank you for coming in today. All right, so, other business, minutes from last month, those that were on the board last month and were here, if there are any corrections to the minutes, please note if there are none, would there be a motion to approve the minutes?
I will move to approve last month's minutes.
Motion by Marlis, second by Rhonda, all those in favor that were here last month, that's five of us, clear for the record, Carlotta? Okay, 5-0 on that, motion carries. Staff, do we have any other business? Seeing no business, this hearing is adjourned. All right.